The meeting of the Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools Board of Education will come to order. Before we request approval of the agenda, I wanted to point out a few changes that have been made in the order of the agenda under discussion and action and superintendent's information. We haven't added anything or deleted any topics tonight or changed anything.
The Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools Board of Education will come to order.
Before we request approval of the agenda, I wanted to point out a few changes to the debate order of the agenda under discussion and action and superintendent's information. We haven't added anything or deleted any topics tonight or changed anything.
The Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools Board of Education will come to order.
Before we request approval of the agenda, I wanted to point out a few changes to the debate order of the agenda under discussion and action and superintendent's information. We haven't added anything or deleted any topics tonight or changed anything.
The Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools Board of Education will come to order.
How do we sound? Do we have clearance now to proceed? I'm not hearing an echo. Okay. So the meeting has already been called to order. And I was just explaining that we have, in the last hour, moved some agenda items around in the order. I'm not going to read them all right now. But nothing has been added to the agenda nor deleted. With that said, I would request a motion to approve the agenda as I just explained where we reordered several items.
So moved.
One second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, but now we're going to move to close session. And we need a motion to move into closed session for the reasons stated on the agenda and one addition that Eva wants to add.
Yes, in addition to our close session motion includes to consult with the attorney, including regarding the matters of AM versus CHCCS Board of Education 23 EDC 04596 and RF on behalf of RS versus the Board of Education 22 CV 00952.
So moved.
Second.
Session? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. There is nothing. We will return from closed session as close as possible to 7 p.m.
Thank you.
We apologize for that. We're waiting for all the board members to get here. I appreciate your patience. Before we get started with the rest of the agenda, just wanted to make an agenda process comments so people are aware. Earlier in the day, we had an order of items to be discussed later in this meeting, and we reshuffled the order a couple hours ago. Nothing has been changed on the agenda that's been posted for the last couple days, but the order in which we discuss items tonight has been. And the agenda that's currently posted is the one we're following tonight. But nothing changes about our public comment and our opening part of the meeting, just so people would know that. The Chair requests a motion to approve the personnel report.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none. Unanimous. Thank you. That brings us to our next item, which is introduction of administrative appointments.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. At this time, we're pleased to introduce the folks who were recently appointed to administrative positions in Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools. We have four people to introduce this evening, who I will introduce by name, and they will join us right here at the microphone. Tonight, let's begin with Dr. Steve Sullivan, the new principal at Chapel Hill High School.
Thank you, Mr. Jeans. This is kind of a homecoming for me. I graduated from USC Chapel Hill back in the days of Michael Jordan, Dean Smith. So we're going to call myself a seasoned UNC graduate. This was starting off my 18th year as a high school principal. I can't tell you of a better place that I would -- there is no better place than I would rather be than here. Everyone, from the students, the staff, and the parents, and everyone that I've met so far, have just been so welcoming and helpful. So I'm excited to start this next journey in my career, and hopefully I'll have 18 more years as a principal, and we'll win another couple more championships along the way. Thank you for this opportunity. It's a pleasure to be part of such a wonderful organization.
Next, we'd like to introduce Dorian Locklear, Assistant Principal at Chapel Hill High School.
Hello. How is everyone? I'm going to keep this brief, just like Dr. Sullivan. This is a homecoming for me as well. I didn't graduate from Carolina. I did graduate from Chapel Hill High School. So being able to come back to the community that reared me and that I came from has been profound. I've been in my position here since September, but I wanted to wait for my teammate before I came to meet you all. So thank you all for the opportunity. My classmates who graduated now. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Next, please welcome Marlene Bennett, AP at Carboro High School.
Good evening. I'm Marlene Bennett. It's been a pleasure to join the team. Like everybody before me said, everybody's been very welcoming. I've had a great experience since I've been here in December. But I'm not from Carboro, but I think it's going to be my home. Three things that Carboro High School really focuses on is consistently collaboration and connections. Those are really important values to me. So I think this might be my favorite home. Thank you.
And finally this evening, please welcome Fonda Robinson, Senior Executive Director of Exceptional Children.
Good evening, board members. And it's been -- yes. It is my pleasure to be here in Gilford Camp. I mean, back up. It is my pleasure to be here in Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools. I desired to come here because your core values align with all that I believe in at the deepest part of my core. This is my 36th and a half year in special education. And people often ask, why aren't you quitting? It's because there's work still left to be done, and I'm excited about doing some of that work here. I am a mother. I am a grandmother. But most of all, I'm a lifelong learner and an advocate for students with special needs. And so I am thrilled to be here, and it has been my pleasure to talk with our principals, some teachers, parents, as well as senior leadership. Thank you for the warm welcome that I've received. I look forward to becoming a part of this community. Thank you.
And that's the least of this evening's introductions. Mr. Chairman, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Jeans. We have a proclamation for National Mentoring Month. I'm going to ask Mike to start.
Okay. Whereas January is National Mentoring Month, an annual campaign to raise awareness and celebrate the powerful impact of mentoring relationships, recruit new mentors, and encourage institutions to integrate quality mentoring into their policies and practices. And
Whereas the Chapel Hill Carboro City School District has a longstanding understanding of the importance of creating equitable learning and enrichment opportunities for all scholars and developing collaborative partnerships with families and community partners that represent our diverse community. And
Whereas Blue Ribbon Mentor Advocate makes our community stronger by nurturing transformative relationships that provide invaluable support networks. And
Whereas youth development experts agree that mentoring has a positive and enduring impact on the growth and success of a young person, encourages healthy youth development and smart daily behaviors. And
Whereas mentoring plays a pivotal role in career exploration and strengthens workplace skills by helping scholars set career goals while equipping mentors with the skills needed to support the professional growth of scholars, driving beneficial outcomes for young people and businesses. And
Whereas the Blue Ribbon Mentor Advocate Program supports the district's Strategic Plan 2027 Portrait of a Graduate by training mentors to encourage their scholars to be ethical and empathic citizens, skilled communicators, critical thinkers, effective collaborators, and adaptable individuals to become global citizens. And
Whereas scholars with a mentor are more likely to enroll in college, participate in sports and extracurricular activities, hold leadership positions in clubs or sports, volunteer regularly, and less likely to engage in substance abuse. And
Whereas Blue Ribbon Mentor Advocate is an innovative, evidence-based practice, and uniquely is both a prevention and intervention strategy that can support scholars of all demographics and backgrounds in all aspects of their lives. And
Whereas National Mentoring Month is the time of year to celebrate, elevate, encourage our mentoring locally and across our state, and to recruit caring and compassionate adult mentor advocates at Chapel Hill and Carboro. And
Whereas the Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools Board of Education honors mentors who support scholars by showing up for them each week and demonstrating their commitment to helping them reach their full potential.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools Board of Education now proclaims January 2024 as National Mentoring Month, and encourage staff and community members to join the movement to empower, engage, and enrich the lives of the scholars we serve. Thank you all. Which brings us to recognition and culture of equity and a sense of belonging at SCROGS. Mr. Jeans?
Back again. Members of the board, at this time, will turn our attention to tonight's recognition. Would you please join me in welcoming school, library, media specialist, and district equity coach Rebecca Behringer from SCROGS Elementary School. Now, in October, we recognized Colberth Middle School for their successful organization of a Community Hispanic Heritage Month celebration in September. Then in November, we recognized FPG to acknowledge and show appreciation for their annual Community Hispanic Heritage Month celebration that they've hosted for many years. And tonight, at long last, we can finally recognize the team at SCROGS, not just for their Hispanic Heritage Month read-in, but for sustaining a culture of equity and a sense of belonging. Rebecca is here now, so that we can recognize the efforts underway at SCROGS. Take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm going to briefly go through some of the initiatives that SCROGS has implemented into practice over the last few years that supports our goal of sustaining a culture of equity and sense of belonging. So this is just a brief overview of some of the initiatives that I will take us through. Just a couple points there. So starting off with our Hispanic Heritage Month read-in that took place this last October, we've been fortunate enough to be able to carry on this event for the last five years, and we invite members of the local community, our Latinx members of our local community, to come and share stories and read really wonderful books with our students. to come and share stories and read really wonderful books with our students, in addition to giving personal details about their life and their culture, their careers, and just have a chance to fellowship and come together with our teachers and students. Here are a few photographs from our most recent event this past October. Spot a couple of our district's finest in there. We have also been able to host an African-American read-in for the past seven years. Next month will be our eighth, and these are some of the local organizations that we have partnered with through the years in that event. These are some of our photographs from last February. We'll be updating those in just a few weeks. We also asked our classroom teachers to student ambassadors to come down and escort their guest reader back to their classroom, create early connections with members of their community, and we have been in talks for a little bit about trying to start incorporating an Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month read-in in the month of May. So planning is underway in that. My partner, Equity Coach, and I have had the opportunity to share some professional development with our staff this year that focuses on student and staff identity, diving into the components of our district's racial equity framework, or racial literacy framework, and supporting behaviors through an equity lens. And our new initiative this year, this is something we just started, we are incorporating weekly culturally competent read-alouds into our classrooms in pre-K through 5th grade. Each month, our grade-level teams receive a collection of four books that are curated by the librarian that focus on a variety of cultural holidays, monthly observances, and topics of social justice and activism. Students are introduced to the text with an attached identity chart that supports the characters or persons highlighted within the book, and then at the end of the read-aloud, they have a chance to dive deeper into the context of the story with curated discussion questions that focus on race, gender, language, geographic location, and more. To conclude, we also have a staff newsletter that goes out monthly called our SCROGS Equity Advocate, and each month, we focus on a variety of different instructional resources, potential read-alouds that can be brought into the classroom, media that our staff can interact with that brings forth equity and topics of social justice to the forefront. All right. Thank you for listening along. I invite you all to come and visit with us anytime to learn more about the great things that are happening at SCROGS.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Is that it, Mr. Jeans?
Back to you.
Back to me. Thank you. I do have one comment to make to everybody here on. It has to do with an email glitch that occurred with our staff. New board members, as many of you know, were sworn in. There are three of them here tonight on December 7th, 2023, and as is customary, each board member was given an email account in the district. And unbeknownst to all of us, there was a glitch that prevented emails that were addressed to all board members from being sent to new board member accounts. It wasn't discovered by any of us for a number of weeks. Once it was discovered, it was fixed. All impacted emails were then delivered to new board members, albeit a little behind schedule. So we just wanted to make a statement in case anybody had emailed all board members, wondering, how come they're not getting back to me? And the new board members are wondering, boy, it sure is quiet here during the holiday break. To much their surprise, it wasn't all that quiet, and they did get some email after the holidays. So I wanted to share that. I also wanted to say thank you to the operations staff and the leadership staff for handling the situation at Sewell Elementary School with the fire in the electrical room. Our operations staff showed up in the middle of the night immediately to get to work, helping the fire department and assessing what happened, and that was quite remarkable. And then the school leadership got involved with handling the 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders that were misplaced, if you will. And I mention that because it's just an indication of the lengths people go to, the staff goes to, to make things work for the students, and everybody's to be commended. I hesitate to call names because I'm sure if I leave someone out, but we thank you. And that brings me to my second issue related to that, and that is aging conditions of many of our school buildings. Right now, as we're meeting tonight and tomorrow, our Orange County Board of County Commissioners is considering in real time the size and scope of a bond to be on the general election ballot in November 2024. They have a number of possible financing scenarios in front of them, and we have spoken to them directly this week and urged them to support Option D or C too, which I won't get into the details, but those options for financing would meet the needs of our district for replacing schools that are simply just old and worn out, and also doing major renovations at our other campuses. And so I say this in public tonight because they're going to continue their discussion tomorrow, Friday afternoon at 2:30 PM, in a day-long retreat at the Southern Human Services Center, and that is open to the public. We intend to be there in case they have any questions. They may make a decision about how large the bond will be, or they may not for another week or two as they continue their meetings, but if any of you are interested and have the time or energy to connect with an email to the Orange County Board of County Commissioners in support of the bond issues, that would be appreciated. Appreciate that. Thank you. Public comments. We're at the public comment part of our meeting. If we can get my little round rule speech here. The Board recognizes the vital importance of listening to varied points of view on programs and issues facing the Board of Education or the school system, and encourages public comment about educational issues. When you're recognized tonight, please state your name, and if you're speaking for an organization, the name and identity of the organization. Speakers are reminded that neither personal attacks nor obscene, abusive, or defamatory language is permitted. Board members may ask clarifying questions of the speakers, but will not engage in dialogue with the speaker or the public. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to present comments. The remaining time in your three minutes is indicated on a tablet clock in front of Ms. Jenkins, who's sitting right here next to me. When you're out of time, please conclude your remarks. To begin, we recognize school improvement team representatives, teacher organizations, and/or high school student government representatives, followed then by public comment. Are there any representatives of these groups that are here tonight that would like to come forward now to get first choice? Next then, I will call individual speakers to come forward to the podium. When you're recognized, please state your name, and again, if you're speaking for an organization, the name and identity of the organization. And I'm going down my list here, and it looks like Gabriel Parker, followed by Celeste Huntington.
We're the Carboro High School Green Team, and we are here today on behalf of Carboro High School's Green Team to discuss the possibility of further solarizing CHCCS high schools. Carboro High School installed a solar panel outside of the school in September 2015, but more investment is needed to have a major impact. We at Green Team believe that we should continue progress in this area across the entire district. We'd like to create a plan on how this could be achieved. Are there any plans to continue the development of solar panels on CHCCS schools? It would be highly beneficial to start now. Continuing the solarization of CHCCS high schools would lower energy costs long-term, reduce emissions, and allow us to continue being a model of sustainability for our community. Speaking with our colleagues, we found this idea is very popular and would have great support among our student community. In the past, there have been grants like the one from Duke Energy and NC Green Power, which sponsored East Chapel Hill High School's solar panels. In order to do something similar, the CHS Green Team would be happy to work with the school board to figure out all the necessary details to obtain funding and get this project underway. How can we best follow up with the board?
You were asking us?
How can we best?
We don't normally get into give and take, but I'd be happy to answer that. If you could follow us through email, we'd be happy to set up a meeting with you to talk about it. You can talk to your school principal, and she can help you with that too, as well, connecting. We'd be glad to talk to you.
Thank you so much.
My name is Celeste Huntington. I'm an Exceptional Children's Resource Teacher at Morris Grove Elementary School and a parent of a student at Chapel Hill High School. I sent an email to the board this afternoon. I shared this email with Exceptional Children Elementary staff less than 24 hours ago and collected 91 signatures from EC staff across the district. The bulk of the email is collective concerns and realities of the impacts of EC restructuring. I'll now read my own words of introduction to that collaborative document. Dear Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools Board of Education, thank you for all you do in service to our schools and our community. I'm an Exceptional Children's Resource Teacher at Morris Grove Elementary and a parent of a Chapel Hill High School student. Speaking for myself, this school year, I am trying to keep the main thing the main thing by teaching EC students well. Instructional time with students is the main thing. I wrote to you all in June to express my profound concern and disappointment about the decision to restructure the Exceptional Children's Department at the district and school levels. I am writing you again now to share collective concerns and the realities of the impacts of the EC restructuring from some EC elementary school staff in the district. The EC restructuring has removed school-based support, EC program facilitators, and created a lot of district-level positions, many of which are vacant. We need boots-on-the-ground EC support positions based in the schools, not Lincoln Center. Perhaps this looks different for elementary schools than for middle and high schools. As the educators doing the daily work of teaching EC students, we have expertise, ideas, and institutional knowledge to share with district leadership. We respectfully request that a comprehensive survey be sent to EC staff and administrators across the district to gather our input on the first semester since the EC restructuring. We do not agree that the district leadership has adequately gathered our input and feedback regarding the significant change that impacts EC staff and EC students daily. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration.
Next up is Ella Smith, followed by Andrew Collier.
My name is Ella Smith, and I am a senior at Chapel Hill High School. I am also co-president of our school's Queer Stride Alliance. I am here on behalf of our group, and especially on behalf of our members who are unable to be here tonight because they would risk their safety by showing support publicly. I am now going to read a statement that we have prepared about NC Senate Bill 49. We, the representatives of the Chapel Hill High School Queer Stride Alliance, have prepared a statement for the Chapel Hill Carboro City School District regarding NC Senate Bill 49. We are expressing our concerns relating to the bill and its potential consequences. This statement was produced and signed in collaboration with the leadership of the East Chapel Hill High School Queer Stride Alliance. Both groups believe this issue to be of great importance, and we are grateful for your attention. Since NC Senate Bill 49 passed, the Chapel Hill High School Queer Stride Alliance has noticed decreased resources for queer individuals at our schools, including fewer teachers asking about preferred names or pronouns, and increased difficulty of accessing gender-neutral bathrooms. We have also seen a disturbing uptick in homophobia and transphobia from students with this casual jest and overt statements. School-proof posters relating to our meetings and events have been torn down and defaced. We fear that the full implementation of NC Senate Bill 49 in our schools will only exasperate these issues. Our members and classmates, students at Chapel Hill High School and East Chapel Hill High School, have shared concerns with us about how NC Senate Bill 49 will impact their personal safety at school. They have told us it will perpetuate discrimination and bullying rooted in homophobia or transphobia because students are unable to fully confide in teacher or administrators without worrying about being outed. People in the LGBTQIA+ class community may become anxious, untrusting, depressed, or other effects that come with having their inner thoughts and conflicts involuntarily shared with their parents. I had a friend who identified as non-binary and used the pronoun "say them" to use a gender-neutral name. When they passed the information out, they were basically ignored, and they had to start processing the negative impacts of that in therapy. The point of high school is to learn how to find your own path and set yourself up to be the best version of yourself. This bill will prevent that from happening. We thank you for all of your previous support and urge you to take note of our experiences and fears when deciding how to enact NC Senate Bill 49. If you only remember one sentence from the statement, we would like it to be this. There are students in your school district who fear for their safety as NC Senate Bill 49 is implemented. We are counting on you to protect this. Thank you for your time.
Andrew Collier, followed by Emerson Stouter.
Hi there. I'm Andrew Lawler. I am the English instructor for the Virtual Academy of Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools. I am coming here tonight to speak on behalf of all the different instructors and staff at that academy. The district has recently introduced a measure to phase out and get rid of the Virtual Academy, and I sent out an email earlier in the day that I encourage you all to read and to look at. The staff and I drafted that over the course of a number of days, and I think it lays out the case more thoroughly and capably than I can do right here, right now. But just to make a short point, we are a small school. We are a school in which we get to know our students very well. They share things with us that I do not believe that they would be sharing in a larger school environment. And I'm here to say that I don't believe that these students would be best served by being sent back to standard in-person education. We have students who were physically assaulted at their base schools. We have students who suffer from severe social anxiety. We have students who have different kinds of disabilities that make in-person learning very, very challenging. We have students who have depression, anxiety, other relevant issues. We have students from all different kinds of perspectives, and I think it is important for us to keep in mind that our object here is to do the best we can as servants of public education. That is not supposed to be education just for the rich. That is not supposed to be education just for the white. That is not supposed to be education just for the cisgendered. That is not supposed to be education just for any one particular group of people, including just people for whom traditional in-person education works. So I am up here just to request your time, your attention, and your focus as you consider some students who are in decidedly precarious situations. There are more specific issues that we could get into, that we do get into in the letter. I do think it is worth considering that we have managed to grow our school from last year, that we are still getting applications, and I just hope that as you all make this very difficult decision, you keep in mind the students that will be affected. Thank you.
Emerson Stouter, followed by Hannah Delon or Delora. Can't quite read the last letter.
Good evening. My name is Emerson Stouter, and I am a junior at Chapel Hill High School, and I would like to discuss my concerns on NC Senate Bill 49 as well. I have lived in Chapel Hill and been a part of the Chapel Hill Carboro City School system my entire life. I would like to share a quote by Sidney Jett Harris that I feel summarizes my educational experience in this district. The whole purpose of education is to turn mirrors into windows. Growing up in the Chapel Hill area, I was fortunate enough to be exposed to individuals with many different gender identities, including ones that differ from my own. However, this was never a topic explicitly discussed in schools, but through day-to-day experiences such as summer camps, soccer teams, clubs, et cetera. To clarify, my introduction to gender identity came from genuine social exposures and not from an academic standpoint. There is no argument to be made that gender identity is any less important than a core class when it holds such a valuable piece of today's societal puzzle. I have also played competitive soccer for over five years now, and the community is unmatched. Your teammates are like a second. Your teammates are like a second family and it's with this privilege that we're able to support one another on and off the field. One of my former teammates came out as trans to the team before their own biological family. Similarly, your school friend group can feel like family, one that can empathize with the struggles of being a student, much less a teenager in today's world. It is with the acknowledgement of confidentiality and trust that someone feels the relief of coming out and expressing their true self, just as my former teammate did. We say we encourage diverse, independent-thinking students, yet we are here discussing depriving young learners of getting a full image of humankind. There is no reason for the school to rush or expose a student's identity prior to them feeling... Thank you.
Hannah, and then followed by Amani Bills.
Hi, my name is Hannah Dillon. I'm also here to discuss NC Senate Bill 49. I am many things. I'm dramatic, I'm energetic, I'm loyal. Quite consider myself as loving. I'm a third-grade teacher at my religious school. I'm a runner, I work hard, and I'm also queer. It's a part of me that's always been there. I'm lucky enough to get to share this part of myself with my parents and I got to share that part of myself when I felt ready. I'm lucky enough to have parents who love me and support me no matter what. Not every kid gets this. It's a devastating thing to say that I'm lucky enough to get this kind of support from people who have known me and loved me and cared for me my whole life. But the reality is that some kids can't say this. Realizing that you're different is scary and as much as everyone wants to be unique, nobody really wants to be different. And even in 2024, it's hard to feel comfortable coming out in any way without feeling scared, even when you know deep down, like I did, that your loved ones would support you no matter what. If a child feels comfortable enough at school to share this part of themselves privately with someone they feel safe with, then the state has no right to dictate that the guardians must know. Would you feel differently if a student were to tell a counselor that they were straight? Would you argue that their parents should be alerted? If your mind went to, well, that's normal, I encourage you to consider why we are so biased against another normal. It's all normal, really. Part of being human is being an individual. There's nothing abnormal about being who you are. The goal is to keep kids safe. They should feel happy and they should feel comfortable in their own bodies. In elementary school especially, when they're learning, they're having a fun and exciting time and they're learning about nature and space and people and hobbies and themselves, they deserve to explore who they are and who they want to be. I feel the safest when I'm secure in who I am and the places that I frequent are happy with me being me. Younger kids are no different. They may not have the words for it, but they have the feelings, which are no less valid. Gender identity isn't a topic to be scared of and hide from. Simply put, it's making sure who you are in your heart and who you are in your brain match who you are on the outside. Not even physically, but emotionally, by the way you speak and the way you act. Allowing kids to explore who they are, their gender identity, will not hurt them. What may hurt them is repressing who they are to appease a bunch of adults who may think they know what's best. Let kids take up space in this world enough so that they feel comfortable being the next adults. Let them be who they are and let them love, grow, and explore. Because isn't that why we get an education? I strive to support and celebrate individuality and I'm certain that each of you wishes the same. I implore you to carefully consider the impacts of this legislation on the health and well-being of children in this district. Thank you.
Amani Bills, and followed by Liam McMahon.
Hi, my name is Amani and I'm a junior at Chapel Hill High School. As much as I appreciate you all taking the time to listen to me today, I know that you don't really have a choice, so I'll try to make this fast. I'm lucky enough to have parents that will love and respect me regardless of my sexual orientation or gender identity. Unfortunately, I know a number of people who are not as lucky. Instead of thinking of the Parents' Bill of Rights as a bill that informs parents about their child's sexual orientation and not confusing young students, I urge you to think about it as taking away a student's ability to find out for themselves who they are. While I know this will only affect kids in grades K through 4, those years are crucial developmental stages for children's brains where they start to evaluate themselves and the people around them. Cognitive development in these stages of kids' lives are crucial to what kind of types of people those students become. To put this more in perspective, there are 1,505 students who go to my school this year. 1,505 kids who are still figuring out who they are. But they're on that journey because they can talk to their teachers, peers, and parents about who they wanted to be. In 1985, the Los Angeles Times published a survey where almost 90% of parents responded that they would be upset if their child came out as gay. Although that was almost 40 years ago, things haven't changed as much as a lot of people would think. By 2022, in a poll that reached 2,210 adults, only 27% said that they would be uncomfortable. And while the drop from 90% to 27% in 25 years is huge, 27% is still a very large amount of adults. And out of all the people who completed the form in 2022, 36% said that they would feel uncomfortable if their child came out as transgender. If we include parents who enrolled their kids in Carrboro or Chapel Hill High School, McDougal Middle School, Rashkis Elementary School, or Carrboro Elementary School, 36% is 1,451. 1,451 parents who would feel uncomfortable if their child wanted to be referred to by a different pronoun. 1,451 parents who would feel differently about them if they wanted to change genders. And assuming each parent has one child, that is 1,551 children who would have to worry about not only feeling comfortable in their own skin but also being seen differently in their parents' eyes. And 1,551 students... Or sorry, 1,451 students who may have confided in a teacher about their sexual orientation or gender identity and would have to be outed to their parents. The fact of the matter is that the Parents' Bill of Rights is already state law and all that I'm asking you to do is consider that this school district can take a different approach. I'm not on the school board and I know that... I'm sure that coming up with solutions to topics like this can be very difficult. But all I ask you to do is try to think about the fact that no one has ever felt the need to out a straight student. And no one has ever felt the need to ban a book like The Odyssey, Hamlet, or The Hunger Games in any school because of the heterosexual relationships in those books. Instead of avoiding the topic as a whole, why not address it the same amount that any educator would bring up a heterosexual relationship? All of this to say that this bill does not help students or educators in any way. Any parent that learns that their child wants to be referred to by a different pronoun is going to wonder why their child didn't trust them enough to tell them themselves. And any child who is outed to their parent is never going to trust a teacher or any teacher, for that matter, again. Any child that doesn't learn about sexual... Different sexual orientations or gender identities is going to feel unrepresented, confused, and irrelevant. And any high schooler will tell you that high school is hard enough without being unrepresented and not educated about what you could possibly grow up to become. Thank you.
We have Liam McMahon, followed by Marcella Twomley.
Hi, my name is Liam McMahon. I live in Carrboro. I hope I didn't skip anybody and this is my first time coming to a meeting. I'm here tonight honestly like in awe of hearing some of the things that folks have just been sharing. I am so concerned about the negative impact that the Parents' Bill of Rights is going to have on younger people here. And I just want to urge you all to do whatever is in your power to be centering them and protecting them and ensuring that in schools, they can show up as their full and authentic selves. I first started to realize that I was bisexual when I was 13. Took me a lot longer to love and accept that part of myself. I cannot imagine how much harder it would have been if a straight comment at school had led to a call home to my parents, gotten me hauled up in front of a teacher. I know that this law is only talking about K through 4, but it's part of a nationwide movement to make younger queer people feel terrible about themselves. We all feel it. And it is really heartbreaking to have seen over the last 10 years of my life, so much progress followed by so much pushback. See progress rolled back. And you know, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a policy expert. You all know much more than I do about how to run a school district, what sort of policies you can and can't implement, how to navigate what the state is setting down for you. But just, I hope that you are ready and prepared to do everything in your power to protect young queer folks here in this district. They all need and deserve our solidarity right now. Thank you.
Marcella Twomley? Not here? Is there anybody else? That's the end of the list that I have? But if you haven't... Are you Marcella?
I am, sorry.
Please.
I was in the other room.
No problem.
My name is Marcella Twomley. I am a parent of Lydia Twomley, who is in ECAC classroom at Rashkis Elementary. I... My daughter has had exceptional services at Rashkis. We are incredibly blessed with a wonderful education team. I know the EC update is on the docket tonight, so I'm just here to encourage, after this year, looking at the EC restructuring. I know it really affected a lot of our staff throughout the district and it really affected teachers on the ground in giving the compliance work done. And I know a lot of the vacancies are still out there for the EC staff that was supposed to replace the program facilitators. So I'm just asking as an ECAC parent, if we can revisit, as Celeste so eloquently put into words, how the restructuring has gone by the end of the year? If we could have a report to see if IEPs are in better compliance now that these changes have happened throughout the district? I really, I think especially in the adapted curriculum classes, this is a student population that's the most vulnerable because of their... Most of the time because of multiple disabilities. My daughter's IEP is so long. And I really... Her staff does such an incredible job of fulfilling all of her services and our experience with CHCCS has been incredible. And it is really because of those educators on the ground that are doing the day-in, day-out work. And I really do want to see the support for those educators continue. Thank you for your time and appreciate it.
Good evening, my name is Carrie Hamel and I'm here too also for the EC crisis update. The allegations of mistreatment of disabled children in CHCCS is nothing less than sickening. And it leads me to ask, have the recent acts allegedly having happened at Smith Middle School been reported to the state? Why or why not? Have those same alleged acts been told to all the families of children in the room and any other impacted children? Why or why not? What staffing notifications are or are not happening at the school and district levels? Good adults not present or overwhelmed with other tasks cannot protect the children. The children in this district are not being protected. We come to another public meeting and there's yet another public comment made about violence happening to children. Resources have to be provided to them. Today's agenda seems to also further be diminishing providing the minutes to be reviewed and approved with regularity by the selected board. It is inconceivable why minutes have not been kept current so that the people can learn how the people's money is being well-spent or poorly spent. Instead, I ask that at every meeting, you list what minutes are going to be approved and which ones are still outstanding. It would save a lot of shenanigans. Speaking of accountability, once again, I encountered barriers to access to a public meeting of the public business with the public dollars. When did that happen? Last week. I sent a note to all the school board so there are directly impacted folks. Re-implement the Technology Advisory Board. It should have not have happened that elected members were not receiving their emails. Furthermore, I ask that all elective... All of the elected here respectfully have to access materials just like any ordinary member of the public does. On that meeting was something that I have advocated for greatly, which is privacy and reducing the harms of technology. I did not have the time to prepare on last week's agenda and now on today about research... The research out there that you putting children, connecting them to computers for extended periods of time in school is in fact poor for them. Second to last, the warehousing passage today of the SIT plans concerns me. Instead, I ask that you bring up to the schools individually all student groups that are behind by more than one year and/or have students whose confidence has become lacking due to the COVID, lack of stable teachers, and so forth. Finally, what has... How have... What... How have the district improved outcomes using the recommendations provided by the vendor on the curriculum audit? And where are those other districts where they have shown progress? Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else here tonight that did not sign up that would like to speak? Please step forward. Introduce yourselves and tell us who you are.
Hi, I'm Danielle Raffetta. I'm a first-grade teacher at Essex Elementary. This is my first time attending one of these, so I'm glad you asked it that way. Is there anyone who did not sign up and wants to speak? Because that's exactly what was in my head. Just hearing from some students and parents, I wanted to speak from the teacher's side for the Senate Bill 49. And some thoughts in my mind that I got to discuss with colleagues today were that as an educator, knowledge is power. We encourage learning and discussion and the more we can discuss and open spaces for discussion, I think the language that we use and develop is really... Can be very empowering for kids. So that's something I'd like for educators to feel as well. In my own classroom, I've heard recent... Even just recently in the last year or two, can boys wear nail polish? What about dresses? Girls can't be astronauts. Girls have to get married and be moms. These are kids, they're six and seven-year-olds. These are things that are said at home, at school. And I want professionally to have the right language and the proper guidance that I can give for comfortable, open discussion about normal kid conversations and thinking. I want my students to feel safe and just as importantly, I want to feel safe and equipped with the right training and provide... Be able to provide them with safe spaces with the right language behind it. So another thing that touched me today is that the difference between identity and sexuality, that we are not teaching necessarily sexuality and especially at these levels. We're teaching about families. We're teaching about what families look like. We're teaching about love, loving ourselves, being who we are, about respect. And just in general, that school is a diverse place where people come together to learn. So anything that we can do to protect that is very important to me. Thanks for listening.
Anybody else who has not signed up and would like to speak?
Yes, I'm Kristi Mather. I'm the mother of a high school student and of a middle school student. And it is the policy changes that you guys are thinking about around state law that I'm here to speak about. And I think that you've heard from the other speakers about impacts and how important it is. And I instead want to tell you a story about something that happened to my youngest child that went so well. And I want you to think when you're writing policy about how to make sure that this kind of situation can still happen. My youngest child was in fall of their fifth-grade year and they told me they wanted to use "they/them" pronouns. And then they said they wanted their teacher to tell the classroom about it the next... And I made no promises. I said, "That sounds like an awful lot to put on a teacher." But I'll email them and you know, we'll just see what can happen. That teacher probably got my email in the morning unless she was up really late reading her email. That day, she managed to find time to consult with the counselor and then she said something to the whole class. I wasn't there. I don't know what she said. But what I heard later from the counselor, who sort of snuck in, you know, in case more discussion was necessary, from the teacher and from my child was that the kids listened and then they got done and they said, "Uh huh, so what? What are we going to do in science?" And since then, my child has had no... There have been no issues. There have been a couple of things that needed to be sort of worked out, but it's been a really wonderful experience. And I want to make sure that that kind of experience could happen for another child. And especially, as has been said, that if there is a child who is not comfortable speaking, that their parent could have that also be able to be handled in a sense. And I want to tell you also about the difference between the questions the sixth graders are answering. I just went earlier this week to stage reading of a play and then afterwards, the high school students hung around and talked about it afterwards. And I just sat and listened. And man, they're pretty sophisticated. They know a lot. They can handle a lot of really complicated ideas. So somehow between those sixth graders and those high school kids, we're doing a really good job. I want to make sure that we can still continue to do a really good job. Thanks. Thanks.
Anyone else who did not sign up that would like to speak? Please come forward. And I think that will end our public comment for tonight. Thank you all. We appreciate you sharing your thoughts with us and for coming forward tonight. That moves us along on the agenda to our consent agenda. The chair requests a motion now to approve the consent agenda. It's been moved. Can I get a second on that? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. None, it was unanimous. Thank you. We're now moving down to our discussion and action section. And for those of you who were here when I came into the room tonight, I explained that we had moved some of the agenda items around so that we could address some of the major topics that I suspect people are hearing in the audience. So we're working off of the revised agenda, but we haven't changed any of it. Brings us to the recommendation for approval. And I've got the, hold on a second, I'm reading from the wrong section. I've got the old agenda after announcing all of our changes. Recommendation for approval of the parent bill of rights with revisions after being sent back to policy committee. It's new item 6A.
Okay, I'm going to start it. Good afternoon, members of the public and board members. And so I'm just going to give a little bit of a background with this just because there's been a carryover from our previous board and our current board. So on November the 2nd, the policy committee actually brought policy 1310 here, the parent involvement to the full board. And at that time, the board, our board expressed concerns for student safety. They also expressed that they were not into and nor were they interested in really thinking about small word changes with this policy, that they really wanted to think about the essence of the policy and ensuring that our students were safe. They asked at that time that we take it back to the policy committee. And while they made it very clear to us that they didn't necessarily get us, want to get into wordsmithing and being subjective with language because that could go on to no end, but they wanted us to make sure that we got the policy language right in the decision around this. So on November 22nd, the policy committee reconvened. And they did however, go through some specific wording that matched our values. And so where there were words that they felt like were not in alignment with our values and what we were trying to convey, they did address that, the policy committee. We also considered and discussed our options. We came up with two options that we're bringing before the full board at this time. We consulted with our board attorney. And so we wanted to make sure at the root of this that our policy would remain inclusive as possible. Mr. Sharp, I'm just going to ask, is there anything that I might have left out from that part?
No.
Okay. So tonight, we'll bring before you again, policy 1310 along with six other policies. 3210 Inspection and Objection to Instructional Materials, 3540 Comprehensive Health Education, 4335 Criminal Behavior, 4720 Survey, Student Survey, 6120 Student Health Services, and 7300 Staff Responsibilities. All of these policies are tied into policy 1300, so they give more specifics if you look at those individual policies. So by addressing policy 1310, we'll really get at some of those other small policies. So we're bringing them here as a pack tonight. I want you to know that as a policy committee, we, while looking at the corresponding policies, we also looked at great and great detail at Section E, which are procedures for parental involvement in student health. We spent a great deal of time in Section 1, where it speaks to procedures for parental involvement in student health, a great deal of time in Section 5, Instruction on Gender Identity, Sexual Activity and Sexuality, and a great deal of time on remedies for parental concerns related to student health. I can assure you that the collective goal is centered around our core values, which are social justice action, wellness, joy, engagement, and collective efficacy. And so with that, we were turning this policy back to you all and our board attorney will speak to you about that.
Sure. I wonder if it makes sense to take 1310 last, to see if there are questions about the other policies, since those were not really sent back for changes. 3210 is the real meaty one that I think will have a lot of discussion. The other policies here, 3210 Inspection and Objection to Instructional Materials is actually a policy that you already have. The Parents' Bill of Rights does require you to have a policy in process for parents to make objections to specific instructional materials or textbooks. But we are essentially keeping the process that you already had. What has been added is some language about, some specifics about how principals are to handle those in the initial review. We, I always have to say back and forth. Then we have the Health Education Policy, Policy About Criminal Behavior. The Parents' Bill of Rights update to that is, it added a requirement that parents be notified anytime there is someone at school suspects that their child has been the victim of a criminal act. And our policy committee recommended that that be, parent would be notified anytime they are suspected to be a victim or perpetrator of a criminal act. Our understanding from staff is this is already, you know, the general practice. But, so that is the main update to that one. Surveys of students, again, implement some of the Parents' Bill of Rights limits around providing student surveys about certain protected topics and requiring parent consent for that. It has been updated since our last meeting because the legislature in a technical corrections bill inserted an exception for two federally funded student surveys. One is the Youth Risk Behavior Surveillance System, which is a CDC research tool that is anonymous and that has been administered to students, actually not in recent years in Chapel Hill, but in general nationwide, every couple of years, I think. And the Youth Tobacco Survey that is also a federal research. So those, that change was made to 4720. And I guess I will pause there, just ask board members, having reviewed these policies before, were there questions about policies other than 1310?
So to be clear, so everybody is aware, this legislation has already been addressed in other legislation and others, general statutes, as well as in our board policy along 80% of the items that plus or minus. And so there's really not any controversy other than making sure our policy matches what we've already been doing. As far as state law, there are a few parts of session law that are what people have been addressing tonight and we're going to talk about in 1310. That's what you're saying? And you are suggesting...
Right. The items about name changes, pronoun changes, instruction in gender and sexuality are all in 1310.
Okay. So we're really talking about the rest of the policies here.
The Parents' Bill of Rights addresses a lot of other topics too, but those were ones that the board had sort of reviewed already.
Okay. So the board members, if there are questions or you'd like to address those policies now, this would be a good time. We were going to get to it one way or the other tonight, either first or second. So we're here, let's do it. And then we'll go back to 1310. And I personally don't have any questions. I did read through them. Didn't see anything that made me want to go, I need to talk about it or ask. I don't know how my colleagues do.
I didn't have any questions.
Not hearing anything. I would entertain a motion that we approve those policies. There are eight of them that she was referring to.
Six.
Six. I take that back.
Yeah, I guess we would include 1300, which is just an index of other policies about parent involvement.
It's kind of like one word change.
Right. So I guess approve for first reading, 1300, 3210, 3540, 4335, 4720, 6120, and 7300.
So the motion would be to approve those policies tonight?
On first reading.
On first reading.
On first reading.
I move to approve policy 1300, 3210, 3540, 4335, 4720, 6120, and 7300 on first reading.
A second. There's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
So then we, that brings us to 1310 Parent Involvement. And there are three different versions of that here in front of you. So number one is marked initial version. That is essentially the Parents' Bill of Rights compliant updates template provided to us by the North Carolina School Board Association. So that is what was initially provided. Going back through policy committee, we came back with two more. The one that says markup after policy committee is what I would call Parents' Bill of Rights compliant plus. So it is compliant with the required changes, but adds a lot of local clarification and values language around and language about that we will comply with this up until the point that it crosses the boundary of anti-discrimination laws and protections. So I expect that that's the draft we'll spend some time in. The third is, we were asked to provide a draft that just doesn't adopt these two what are sort of the most problematic for the board provisions. And so that's the one that is listed as with two provisions removed. So that one does not contain everything required by the... But my guess is that we would like to look at the more detailed markup and start there.
Are you wanting us to start with option two?
I think that makes sense. And I guess what I will do is review sort of what's changed since the last time the board saw it. And board members, if you have it, there was a small, couple of small changes on the first page that were requested by policy committee.
Eva, before we continue, could I ask you a process question here?
Yes.
Would it be appropriate for me to take the temperature of the board to see if there is action that might preclude us having to talk about all this?
Sure.
Thank you. What I would ask as a question for discussion is, is there, well, I'll just put it out there. My recommendation is that we not comply with the law and that we say so cleanly when it comes to these two parts about the pronoun passage and the identity gender discussion. And we develop sub-statement that says, we're complying with parents' rights law up until this point and we're going to stop here. Our system works appropriately and well for our students the way we've been doing it. And pending legal or litigation or something down the road, we'll reconsider this, but we find it to be discriminatory or something like that. So I wonder if there's any, and I've been hoping for the board members to share your thoughts or questions and if, well, we'll see. Is there any energy for just doing something like that? Recognize speakers when they want to speak. Barb?
Just so everyone knows, so first, I just want to say that we got a lot of email on this topic and I want to say thank you to everybody who sent us email. I think this is another example of why it would have been good to maintain written public comment, but we don't have that. So everyone, just trust me when I say we got a lot of email and everybody except for one, I think was pretty clearly against adopting a policy that straight up implies with a law, which I think we should stop calling the Parents' Bill of Rights because it's not that. It's something else. I know that's what they call it, but if they really believed in parental empowerment, they would not have in the exact same legislative session passed a law saying parents cannot get gender-affirming care for their kids. That said, I guess, George, I, as I, I sent to the chair and also to the attorney some additional language that I would like everyone else to be able to pass on. I will note that the last time the policy committee took this up, there were three different board members. The policy committee at that time was made up of three people, two of whom are no longer on the board. And it seems to me that we, a cleaner way to do this might be to take all of the feedback that we got tonight in public comment, the emails that were received, and have a specially called policy committee meeting to address an additional version that has the language that I suggested. Failing that, I would like to be able to share the language that I think we should include. But I guess I just wanted to say to me, there's a, I don't think we should feel bound by these three attachments to the agenda for the reasons I just laid out.
Thank you. Other board members want to speak on this right now?
So Eva, if I remember, there is a timeframe for implementation or potentially not. What's, that's my first question. What is that?
So the budget bill, when the bill was first adopted, it was essentially effective immediately. But of course, it was written in May, not adopted till August, school had already started. It was not realistic. So in the budget, the legislature added some deadlines and the deadline for adopting policies was January 1st, 2023.
So technically, we are in non-compliance at this moment. And so despite whether board members are new or old, my read on board decisions and things like that, it doesn't matter who's on the board, we are one board. So whether board from 20 years ago, I'm still part of that board, right? And so, you know, I hesitate to keep kicking the can down the road on whatever we're going to do on this. I mean, it's unfair to the public, it's unfair to our community to keep saying, just because we have new board members. I mean, board members discussed this, we discussed it. There were opportunities for people to comment last year. We've gotten lots of emails and comments over many, many months. There's been lots of meetings with staff on this and how to handle it. So I understand that new board members may or may not have been following it while they were running for office, but this was a very public topic in North Carolina. So I hesitate to keep delaying this for so many people who are impacted in our community. That's just me, right? I think we owe it to our community to go ahead and whatever we're going to do, we need to do it and move forward with whatever we're going to do. So that's just my feeling on necessarily delaying whatever we end up doing, whether it's not doing some or all, but that's just me. George, I'm open to it, but I think I asked the last time we discussed this with Eva, the ramifications of not being in compliance. We find ourselves in a circle of, we don't comply with the law, something happens, it gets challenged, and then we then spend very limited tax dollars to then be forced to be in compliance while we're talking about facility needs and teacher pay. So for me, I think we as a board need to come to where we can live in the gray of whatever we have to comply with, with the bill and do what we've done best in North Carolina as a district and just figure out how we wordsmith something, work on, with our staff to put something in place. You know, because I don't want us to say, we're not going to do it and then we end up in a lawsuit spending limited tax dollars here. You know, it's, it's those things that as the Finance Facility and Operations Chair sits in the back of my mind, it's like, we're making tough decisions in a tough climate, but we've got to be fiscally responsible. And so that's my fight. So I don't, I want us to figure out how we can live in the gray, put things in place that we have done for so long in this district to be the district that we are and really show our values as best we can. I know it's going to be tough. I'm willing to do the work on it. That's where I am. I mean, if other board members want to not do parts of it, I can go with that too, but I just... But I just, I want us to keep that in mind to the fiscal side of it all. But basically, what Eva's advised is, ultimately, we'll end up with legal bills. Money, we'll be spending money.
Thank you. Barb, I'd like to hear, is the language that you referenced, the language in green and the after-November policy?
So, I mean, I'm happy to, I, my, I do have thoughts about how to change the version that's for parent involvement markup after November Policy Committee. So yes, I guess. So the green, the green, just for everyone, the green is what the Policy Committee suggested as a way to modify the North Carolina School Board Association version. And to me, I guess I will say, I do think we should adopt a policy, because I think what's currently happening is that people in schools are just doing the best they can, and I think that's not fair to school, community members, and that they need guidance from, from us. And so I think I would be in favor of having a policy that is minimally compliant with this law that still embodies our district's values of inclusiveness. And I, so I guess, to me, it's easier to address the one about no instruction on gender identity, so if we could start there. If that's, George.
That's line 360, the end of November policy.
Okay. So.
We just hold on a second. Were you wanting to start talking about changing this now? Because what I wanted to do first is just check the temperature of the board before we go to one of these options and start wordsmithing. Or did you just have a question about what Barb said?
Add quickly onto what you just said.
Go ahead, Mike.
Policy Committee, their job is to make the boards work more efficient by getting the wordsmithing out of the way ahead of time so that we don't do it here. So hopefully, we don't need to get to that point, because this is basically the product of us meeting in November saying, here's versions we'd like to see. The Policy Committee went to the work of putting those versions together as best we could, and they're here for you now. So I'm hoping that we can keep our discussion at a higher level rather than getting into the nitty-gritty of the work.
Is this the combination of November and this week's meeting?
Well, okay, so we, we, the board met in early November, sent it back to the Policy Committee, and that was right before Thanksgiving. Yeah, right.
Please reflect the changes.
Yes, this reflects that work since then. Yeah.
Other board members that haven't spoken want to say anything on this?
I'll speak to it.
Go ahead.
My mindset is that we have to still be mindful and intentional with how we let our students, faculty, and staff know that we're going to protect them and be safe and continue doing what we say we want to do in this district in terms of trying to abide by what the state says, but also acknowledging when the state isn't. What's the best word to say this without saying? When the state isn't really doing things that we know tend to fare well in Chapel Hill-Carroll City schools, that we've got to do what's best practices for Chapel Hill-Carroll City schools as a collective. Because if we're not going to be intentional and boldly stand up and say, this is what we're going to do to protect them, how can we expect our students to go out and be global citizens and be the best versions of themselves to do that for others? So I think we're going to have to step out on faith a little bit and stand up and let them know that we will lead by example.
Thank you. Other board members?
I mean, I, I really struggle with thinking about this, because I'm really of two minds. One, I think my impulse is to just, I, I truly believe that this legislation that the state put forward is discriminatory at its core. It's not only offends my sense of right and wrong, but I think it truly puts a lot of students at risk. That being said, I think it's, I think it is risky to not have a policy that we're in charge of crafting in a way that protects our kids as much as possible. And so personally, I would like to hear publicly what Barb has to say in terms of adding additional language to what we have now that further protects our kids. So I respect what the Policy Committee did, and I totally understand what you were saying. And, you know, I think there are very few issues out there that I would want to, that I would want to kind of listen to what the Policy Committee is saying, because I do trust your judgment. But I think in this particular case, because there is such public investment, and I think the issues that we're dealing with here are so crucially important that I think we need to be pretty careful about the language. And, you know, would like to see, especially given the fact that Barb is a lawyer and has experience working with these issues, I think it's important that we hear from her and incorporate what we can into this discussion.
Other comments? When I introduced the question of taking the temperature, I made a few comments, but I would like to just elaborate a little bit on where I'm coming from on this with the board and with my colleague. And that is, we do have a legal obligation to protect the welfare of all our students. We also have, and a moral obligation, we also have a legal obligation to follow the general statutes of the law of North Carolina. And that's clear. So I think we're at a crossroad sometimes of what to do. We have a core value in our strategic plan for social, that supports social justice action, justice action, social action. Just because something's in law doesn't make it right. And doesn't make it palatable to me, no matter how you word it, because it's wrong to start with. It's discriminatory. It targets a subgroup of children, no matter how you want to look at it. That point was made by some of our speakers tonight. My sense is that we do need to stand up and show people that somebody has the courage to just say, this is morally wrong. And we're not going to do it this way. We are taking care of our kids. It's working. And we're going to keep doing that while we look at other ways to figure this out. And if somebody comes after us legally, we can deal with that at the time. I don't think we're committed to spending money. We can change to go back and follow the law. I believe, Eva, that, you know, typically, there's an opportunity for us to correct our policy. So we're not putting ourselves in a do or die tonight by refusing to try and add language to that. I also respect every point my colleagues have made and the dozens of letters we've heard and everything. I'm not trying to be cavalier with anybody. But, you know, I've seen enough of these kind of things, and it's like, we can't always be looking to somebody else to step up. Nobody in North Carolina so far has stepped up that I'm aware of and just said no. And somebody needs to. Now, I'm not looking to pick a fight, not looking to pick a fight with the General Assembly or anybody, but I'm also not going to back down from one just because it might happen. And that's my personal thought, and that's why I want to raise the question, which might circumvent us then looking at other variables. You know, so if there was a motion not to do that, that'd be great. If not, I'm not going to push it, but I've at least had a chance to express myself. With that said, are board members here to say anything more?
I'd like to say something, though, George. When you just mentioned a few moments ago that we are, we do have a responsibility to abide by the general statutes, I would also like to remind us that in our oath, it actually says that we are supposed to abide by the Constitution of the State of North Carolina when it's not in conflict with the Constitution of the United States. We are in that situation. And no, I'm not a lawyer, but I have had to take that oath many times in many situations, being in the arena that I come from, where you have to look at people and protect their rights. And in this situation, our students, faculty, and staff in our community, federal rights are being tested by our state right. So we have to be prepared, like I said, to look at what's right and do what we think is best for our community.
Anybody else? Well, my last question would be, would anybody care to make a motion to just not comply?
How make the motion?
There is a motion. Is there a second?
I don't know. Clear up what not comply means. Does that mean we don't write a policy?
We, we, we don't address these two issues with any new policy. We make some kind of statement that says, you know, the things I said before about, you know, pending litigation down the road or pending clarification down the road. We'll consider the policy further, but right now, we're just not going to address.
So the, one of the options here is a policy that has those two provisions removed.
Right.
But contains everything else that is from.
Right.
So that, is that what you mean by not comply?
That's what, that's what I mean.
Okay.
I'm fine with that. Anything that gets us closer to not trying to implement this policy?
So to be clear, this is the third item, option two. Option three, but option two.
Right, the one that's labeled 1310 with two provisions removed.
So would you amend your, your motion to be, that we accept option three?
Yes.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
And seconded is there further discussion about the motion, which is to accept option three, which is to not implement those two parts of the policy?
Yes.
Yes, but.
Well, the, the, the issue with that, though, is that staff are already doing that. I mean, they are.
Are you doing which part?
Complying. I mean, there, there's like, there's, I think, right? I mean, I thought that's what we are led to believe.
They're not required to notify parents as it states in the bill.
I mean, we just, I just think, we just heard students talking about the ways in which things were curtailed. And I recognize that's not, you know, that's student public comment. But I feel like if we're going to pass a policy that omits these things that are statutorily required, then we must also give guidance or regulation or something, or else we're just pushing off to staff what, what we should be doing. And I think, I think, I hear you that I, you know, we should stand up and do what's right, but I would also like to be effective and put ourselves in the best situation for actually prevailing and holding on to our core values. Like, to me, it's, it's making sure students are protected, making sure teachers are not put in the position of having to decide between protecting students and following the law and keeping, this regime is like not administrable. I mean, to say that you can't teach about gender identity, that's absurd. That's what they do all the time. I mean, it's like, everyone has a gender identity, right? Not just transgender people. So I, I, I think my concern about, about what you're suggesting is, is that it offloads the responsibility to the most vulnerable members of our community.
I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm not understanding why that offloads it on someone else when what I'm hearing from staff is that the way we are dealing with our children now is effective. And that, yeah, on a case-by-case basis, staff work with students to help them with whatever issues they bring to them. That's what I'm hearing. I don't see why, I wouldn't agree that we're, it's, we're doing something that's not right now. I'm not hearing any of that from people.
I understood that staff have got guidance about what the law is, and we're told how to comply with it. So.
And then Riza, after you.
No, no, go ahead.
Well, staff receive guidance on what the law says. There have been situations where this board, because we don't have administrative regulations for every single policy, where this board has directed me and my administration to then create administrative regulations to align with the policies that are implemented. So if this board were to approve, I think it's labeled option two, but it's the one that has those two provisions removed, you could also direct administration to create an administrative regulation so that it's very clear as to how we do what you're trying to explain, George, how we support our students, how we protect our staff, and how we, what procedures we follow as it relates to this policy.
I just want to clarify. So we don't have a policy in place that touches on state law. It doesn't remove state law from being there. It just means that we aren't providing local clarification on what it looks like here.
So what this particular law says is that school boards must adopt a policy, and it must state that, let's, let's deal with the names and pronouns, that there will be parent notification prior to any change in what staff use to refer to a student. And so if, you know, if there is not policy, the Parents' Bill of Rights doesn't provide liability or like action against individual teachers. What it says is that a parent, and it only takes one, could make a complaint the system is not in compliance with some provision, that would have to come to the board first, but then could go to Superior Court. And if the board was not in compliance with that, then court would order them to come into. So what, specifically with this, what it says is, the body shall adopt procedures to notify a parent of certain things, and one of them is, prior to any changes in the name or pronoun used for a student in school records or by school personnel, notice to the parent of that change. So one of the options we're considering is just not addressing that in policy, which would leave the policy to just say more generally, as the bill says, that we encourage students to speak about sensitive issues with their parents and that sort of thing. Then if, then the, the potential consequence would be that a parent doesn't get notice and they bring it. Which could, now, I suppose the difference of not having a policy at all is then you are open to a complaint just that you don't have a policy instead of how it impacted. You also mentioned in reading the language, it says, the board shall adopt a procedure. So if the board adopts the policy without the two provisions and directs the administration to develop a procedure, in theory, you're in compliance with. If the procedure says that we are going to notify parents of our any change. Gotcha.
Well, it's one thing to develop the policy, it's another to have it in compliance. I mean, we're directing, we are going to develop a policy.
Well, it says that it's going to say this. I mean, sometimes the legislation says you have to have a policy on how you're going to do something, and sometimes it says your policy is going to say this, and this is the latter situation.
You're right.
Yeah.
So there is a motion on the floor to accept option two.
Maybe we add in language that I set about with also directing administration to make a regulation.
Make regulations.
To direct.
To direct admin to make a regulation about how the staff would.
It's to implement, it's to adopt option four and.
You keep going up. You said option.
Option three, thank you.
Two, it's two.
It's our third one. It's option two.
No, no, what up? We're good.
I attended Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration. Topic is now. In this conversation, I said, I attended a Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration this past week, and the topic is now. And this conversation reminds me of discussions that probably had, were had in this.
were had in this room or similar room 20 or 30 years or 40 or 50 years ago with respect to the rights of women and black people and other people who society felt like didn't conform to their, white society or majority society didn't feel like they conformed to theirs. And so that's kind of ringing in my head as we're talking, the time is right. I go back to Georgia's points and I appreciate your continued leadership on this of, if it's wrong, why are we gonna do it? And I hear you, Riza, and you certainly have built to my practical, let's think about what the implications are district and how much risk we're creating in this. But I think the time is now. And so I would support adopting the policy without the provisions and asking administration to develop the regulations that would help guide staff about the expectations.
I don't know what we're doing procedurally or what I'm allowed to do.
You're allowed to talk when the chair recognizes you and you've been recognized.
I mean, I know the regulations are within the purview of the superintendent, but I guess, for what it's worth, I mean, I, my, what I thought we could do is in a policy, but it could also be in a regulation, do something to say, we, there's this exception in the law, and I know it doesn't necessarily apply right to the print, the pronoun notification thing, but about unless a reasonably prudent person would think that a child will become abused or neglected. And it seems to me that we could have a regulation that references that language and says, there's enough evidence out there that outing children creates a danger so that we will require something from parents before we, like affirmative support from a parent before, evidence of affirmative support before we tell them about their child's position. What they're asking to be called. Like, because I guess my ability to vote for this sort of depends on what the regulation's gonna be. I realize that we don't know that because we just started talking about this now, but.
I think that, like.
Barbara, were you finished? I didn't mean to cut you off.
No.
My one concern about regulations, as we've been known, the regulation wrote before, is we need to be clear as a board, right? And, and I trust Dr. Hamlet, but remember, Dr. Hamlet may want to retire one day. And so, so that's something for us to keep in mind versus policy. It would take the board and the majority to change something. So we, I want to make sure we're clear with staff, administration, like what we expect in the regulation, just to make sure without a doubt, we're doing what we want. I know Dr. Hamlet is, but that's just something for us to keep in mind. We're basically handing off our ability to codify it in policy, our values on this, and putting in a regulation. And I'm fine with that, but I just want us to think about that, too. We are in a position where we've got a superintendent where they're gonna put regulation in. The regulation is a policy. And so that's just my point on it. I know, just based on our discussion about procedures where the superintendent is, but I just, I'm thinking like 10 years down the road, 15 years down the road, you know, what we're signing up for and not putting our values in our policy so it's clear without a doubt.
Mike was next for the new round. Well, I was really just gonna sort of address the idea of regulation in general, but I mean, because that's their purview, right? But what we can count on is that they're going back and looking at the tape of this discussion, that they're hearing what we've said is our desire and incorporating all of that into the work that they do. You know, so, so I don't think it needs to be included in what we move or what we spell out as long as we've had that conversation. I'm trusting.
So I would say I just see it a little bit differently in that we are putting our values by removing the provisions and asking administration to give guidance to staff and how to execute that in a way that gives them clarity and, you know, sort of helps them understand how they are expected to behave. So to me, this, this is the loudest statement of our values we make as a whole. Setting the policy that prioritized keeping students.
Other final measure?
I wonder if it, I'm not sure that the term regulation is necessarily universally understood. And so I think, as Ronnie was starting to do, it might help to restate that, what I understand, to see if it's what the board understands that you're asking for, which would be for the administration to develop written guidance for staff that tells them how to handle requests for name and pronoun changes at school in a way that aligns both with what is expressed in this policy, which is a preference for parent involvement and in issues, sensitive issues involving their children, but also with the board's values of protecting LGBT. Is that what you have in mind? Right, yes. And you are right that if you leave it to the administration to develop that, any future administration could change it. Obviously, the board could at that point. You know, you can always direct them differently, yeah.
I was just gonna say, I think we should also consider that in making this move, that we would be making a statement to other school boards around the state and setting an example for a way to handle this type of legislation that we deem harmful. I think it's important, you know, you, on a, on a more minor level, you saw it happen with certain school boards around the state who are not in compliance with a calendar law that the state government has enacted. And you've seen now, I think, 17 districts make that same move. So perhaps we could see ourselves as maybe a standard bearer of setting an example for other boards and helping to further this important cause that we deem to be really an imperative for our students and hopefully it'll be replicated with our students around the state.
Just another really quick thing. I mean, I do feel like the risks of litigation exist whether, right Eva, whether we, no matter what policy. I mean, the law enables litigation whether, no matter what. So I do feel like I'm persuading, I'm coming around to this virgin whatever, one, two.
Option two.
Virgin seven. And I guess, I mean, we've been focusing on the name and pronoun, but I just wanted to throw out there that the instruction on, on the other one, I don't, I mean, we haven't talked about that very much. So in terms of administration having guidance about how to draft regulations on that part. And we just haven't talked about it very much. And for what it's worth, the only thing I think we should add is something like, you know, if we're not gonna have gender identity, like instruction, then it should also be the case that no one is taught that any one gender identity is preferable to another. But. Oh, sorry. I knew I had to go. We also have an anti-bullying law and policy that explicitly mentions gender identity and sexual orientation. And I think, not, we've been talking about Title IX, but it's also our own policy that this is, this conflicts with.
Well, and so I think we're at this point, we do have a motion here on the table. And, you know, our job is policy and the district administration is regulation. And I think what we're doing is considering adopting option two here with, I'll get to you, Ronnie. With the provision that we develop regulations.
Wouldn't call it guidance.
Yeah.
But she's.
At some point, we're gonna close off discussion and have to vote, but Ronnie wants to say something again.
Yeah, which is just related, but then that policy, I would like to exclude roles 333 through.
Which one, Johnny?
I'm sorry, Ronnie, say that again. 333 through 342.
A yellow highlighted section for us. Motion is getting opposed friendly amendments here slightly here. We don't want to make it so complicated. We don't know what we're voting on.
Oh, we should repeat it. It's clear for the public.
Absolutely, we will, we will repeat it. So it's clear. Okay, nobody else has their hand up. So if I understand it correctly, then the motion on the floor is to accept option two with the deletion of lines 333 to 342 and direct the administration to develop regulations.
Written guidance.
I'm sorry.
Written guidance. To develop written guidance for staff as to how to follow the, how, what are we telling them to do?
How to handle requests for name changes in line with protecting our students and staff. And then do we want to add anything else of instruction? And maybe that's sufficient and you bring back a draft.
Yeah, I'm not sure if there's a need for written guidance about instruction in gender and sexuality. I will note that those topics do not show up in the official curriculum until fifth grade, which is only in the first case.
And we already have policy and procedures in place that allow parents to challenge. There's a review process that is codified in policy.
So you would be okay with not adding the written guidance part, but we'll leave in the deletion of lines 333?
No, no, no. We need the written guidance part for.
Notification.
Notification of name changes, but not for instruction. Okay, so can we repeat that one more time? So as best as I can try this. The board's intention is to approve policy version, which states draft policy 1310 with two provisions removed, removing roles 33, 333 to 342, and directing administration to develop written guidance for staff that tells them how to handle requests for staff name changes.
Student.
Student name changes and pronouns. And in alignment with protecting student safety. And staff safety. That sound good?
Say another word. All right, so that is the motion that is on the floor with several friendly amendments. It has been seconded?
Motion by Vicki Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing nothing, it was unanimous. Thank you. That brings us to the next item in the revised agenda, which is 7A. Under Superintendent, report exceptional children's department update.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Dr. Hamlet, district staff, and our community. I am joined here tonight with my colleagues from HR as well as our EC district senior team to bring you an update about our exceptional children's department. Tonight, our team is prepared to provide you with an update regarding our EC child count for the December 2023 child count. We will also take an opportunity to step back and talk about the historical context, which led us to restructuring our EC district senior team, as well as to talk about areas of focus that were developed to guide that work. We will talk about some of the work that has happened thus far. We will present to you a staffing and recruitment and retention update. We will talk about the progress that has been made, and then we will also discuss next steps. And so this time, I'm going to invite Erin Watts, who's our Director of Compliance, to begin our presentation.
Good evening. I am Erin Watts, the current Director of EC Compliance. I would like to thank you for inviting us to share, to share our, to share a little bit about our work this evening. So to start with, we would like to begin by giving background and demographic information about students that we serve in special education. Just as a reminder, we have this information up here. This is our K2 data for the district by student racial group. Our district is 49% white, 19% Latinx, 13% Asian, 12% Black, and 7.5% multiracial. We will break down our special education population by race in the following slides. This slide reflects the total number of students in exceptional children as counted by our child count. Child count is reported by, reported to the Department of Public Instruction on December 1st and April 1st of each year. Child count is the official number used for funding from the state. This chart reflects April of last year and our current December 1 child count. The first row reflects pre-K through 12th grade. The second row separates pre-K out from school age students. Our numbers are slightly lower this year than April of last year. We do expect fluctuation in these numbers each year as students are exited from exceptional children services and as they move in and out of our district. We also find that our, I'm sorry, we also find that our April, April child count is slightly higher due to students being evaluated and identified during the fall and spring semesters. Next, we show a breakdown of our exceptional children students according to race and gender. We have more males and females identified, especially in white, Black, and Latinx student groups. While we do have 64 pre-K students identified in our EC pre-K program, this number is really too small for us to break down into racial groups for public sharing. There are 14 disability categories under IDDA, of which we provide special education for and related services. Over 90% of those eligibility services are provided in our general education classrooms, which is why we will often hear our staff members making note that our students are general education first. Our largest category, eligibility is specific learning disability, followed by autism and other health impairment. Our largest pre-K eligibility categories are developmental delay, autism, and speech and language. It is important to note on this slide that students may be eligible for more than one category. So for example, if a student has an eligibility of learning, a specific learning disability and other health impairment, they would count twice. This data reflects our eligibility of our students by race in each of our largest identification categories. Latinx students are the greatest number identified in the category of learning disability, followed by our Black students. Our white students are the largest number identified in the categories of autism, other health impairment, speech and language, and emotional disability. So we've discussed the students that we serve. Now we will share a little bit off the education, educators who serve those students. As noted, in, as noted, the state board policy, the elementary, there is a state board policy that states elementary school teachers can have up to 35 students on their caseload, while secondary teachers can have up to 50. CHCCS has set a significantly lower target for caseloads in comparison to state policies and also the surrounding public school units. Please note that with this most recent decision headcount, some of our students and staff ratios have increased from our target, which prompted our department to examine staff caseloads and student service delivery to allocate additional staffing as needed. So breaking the down, the, I'm sorry, breaking the data down further, this slide shows similar information about our adaptive curriculum educators. The first row on this table captures adaptive curriculum class sizes requirements per state policy and by level. Row two captures CHCCS targets in alignment with CHCCS board policy thirty-five-twenty. And the last row reflects that the surrounding district caseloads follow the state policy for adaptive curriculum caseloads. With recent changes to the regulatory language, the district administration acknowledges that the use of system-level phrasing needs to be revised to adaptive curriculum in policy thirty-five-twenty, and we will be bringing that policy to the policy committee soon for review. And so the next step is back to Dr. Hamlet.
So the next part of our presentation, I will briefly talk about the historical review and rationale for change for our EC district department, much of which was covered in our June presentation. But then I'll also talk about the four areas of focus that were developed to actually guide that work. Before jumping into the historical context and talking about the rationale for change, I just want to acknowledge that leading and implementing restructuring of the work, following the guidance from not one but two comprehensive reviews of our EC instructional program and department is certainly not easy. And when we started this journey back in probably two thousand eighteen, that was interrupted by many different things from the change in EC departmental leadership. And also unfortunately, I hate to bring this word up, but COVID. And so with that, as we embarked on making those changes, when we turned back to in-person learning, I think Dr. Hamlet did a very nice job in acknowledging some missteps that took place with our communication across the board. And so tonight, as we talk about what we've done thus far, we will also talk about how we followed up with communication since June. And then we will also talk about the steps that we have put in place moving forward as we communicate, navigating through the restructuring process. The other piece that I also want to bring to our attention are the two core functions of our EC department. Compliance, which means that we are making sure that we are following the local, state, and the federal guidelines and ensuring how we provide special educational services. But then also, most importantly, is the specially designed instruction. This is providing quality instruction for our EC students that's grounded in grade level standards that provide specially designed instructional strategies that also allows, allows our students to have access to the general curriculum in alignment with their IEP goals. And last but not least, I also want to bring our attention back to our EC departmental vision that we developed last year. And while I will not read that vision in its totality, what I will lift up is that our vision and the work that we do for our department goes beyond making sure our students are provided or prepared academically, socially, and emotionally. But we also want to prepare them for their daily living. We also want to prepare them for continuing their education, as well as the workforce and beyond. And the way we do that is by using our anti-racist structures to eradicate those inequities that do not allow our students to safely access their instruction and be able to be provided with the necessary accommodations as needed. So briefly talking about the historical context. Two comprehensive reviews that we actually referenced in terms of developing the restructuring come from the comprehensive review that was done by the North Carolina Public Instruction during the two thousand seventeen-eighteen school year. And then also the most recent review that was done for our entire instructional curriculum framework back in December of last school year. And while both of those documents were very comprehensive, I want to talk really about some of the main points that were lifted up as they reviewed specifically the current structure of our department back then during those school years up until twenty-two, twenty-three, looking at the service delivery that we were providing for our students, student outcomes, as well as physical manage, fiscal management. So summarizing some of the historical context that was lifted up from both reports, there was information that stated that there was weak and little evidence of specially designed instruction happening for our EC students. That there was not consistent fidelity in how we measured our progress for our students and that the roles and responsibilities for our program facilitators were not clearly outlined and executed. They also noted that our teachers' understanding around basic special educational policies and practices was inconsistent. They noted that our job descriptions did not significantly specify how their responsibilities were related to curriculum design, delivery, how they would report and demonstrate accountability. The reports also indicated that there was little evidence of curriculum supports or differentiated instruction that would address the needs of all of our students and that there was inconsistent use of instructional strategies that supported collaboration as well as diversifying our strategies to meet the unique learning styles of our students. Again, there was information in both of the reports that talked about the unclear procedures for monitoring our ongoing instructional delivery, as well as how we designed our curriculum and our assessments that clearly outlined what we were teaching in our classrooms, in what sequence, and at what pace, and also at what developmental level. And so taking that information, we developed our rationale for change to address those concerns. One of the things that we wanted to do was certainly to improve communication and the level of support that we had in terms of streamlining those supports that were delivered to our schools. We wanted to also outline clear oversight of our staff and program areas. And most importantly, we wanted to make sure that we were elevating specially designed instruction. We wanted to make sure that we were also in compliance with our local, state, and federal laws, policies, and procedures and recognizing that there was a need for providing high-quality and consistent professional development and ongoing coaching for our teachers as well as our school leaders. And so we had an opportunity after our June twenty-twenty-three meeting to really have four focus group sessions, of which we invited our EC staff, we invited certified as well as classified staff, we invited our principals, so that we would have an opportunity to talk about the changes that actually had been made and to provide clarification. Specifically, those focus groups centered around talking about the roles and responsibilities of EC teachers, which were not changed in their job descriptions. We talked about the roles and responsibilities of EC case managers, which was not changed in their job descriptions. But we also provided a crosswalk with the previous roles of the program facilitators to the new roles of the instructional specialists, as well as the compliance specialists. And then we had a discussion about the pain points in terms of the structure and what were some of the existing needs of additional support. A lot of that information was noted in the abstract around the information that we were able to collect, which led us to designing a work plan, which is highlighted on this slide. There were four areas of focus that were designed in this work plan. One, being able to create systems and structures that would clearly refine our policies and procedures in our district. Two, to continue to work intentionally around building professional capacity, again, not only for our staff, but also for our school leaders. Three, for expanding instructional resources, and specifically thinking about that as we talk about our ECAC classrooms. And again, last but not least, building intentional focus around specially designed instruction. And so the next few slides that I'll share with you basically talk about some of the deliverables from the work plan that was developed that we've been able to implement thus far. So thinking about specially designed instruction. One of the things that we did, and actually this has happened over the course of probably two to three years, we've provided training around the basic modalities of co-teaching. We did do a reset in August of two thousand twenty-three for the school year. Reset of August two thousand twenty-two for that school year. And then we spent the, that part of the school year actually going in and doing implementation walkthroughs to be able to measure the fidelity of which we were successfully implementing the modalities of co-teaching. With the walkthroughs that we were able to do, we were able to collect additional information that led to deeper professional learning to support co-teaching around differentiated instruction. The lead in that delivery around the professional learning for differentiated instruction has continued to take place in our IC department and their professional learning sessions. We also worked with our schools to develop their schedules to allow co-teaching. And most importantly, one of the things that was lifted up during our focus sessions was that in our ECAC classrooms, there were not opportunities for collaboration and planning. And so there was an intentional focus this school year to make sure that that was a part of the master schedules for our schools. And then during the summer of this school year, we also spent time working specifically on high-leverage practices that would allow us to differentiate and design and scaffold instructional strategies that we're able to provide in our ECAC classrooms. And then we also have created since then a walkthrough tool for our school and district administrators to really be able to identify what are effective practices around instruction that should take place in our ECAC classrooms. The other piece in terms of developing our focus around standing up our restructuring centered around the creation of systems and structures and refining our policies and procedures. The work that has taken place since then has been the creation of a WHO2 call to streamline the span of support that is offered to our schools. We've also had an opportunity to create and launch our EC manual that has also been supported with direct delivery through face-to-face instruction, as well as micro courses that are developed and housed on Canvas for our staff to be able to continue to revisit as needed in terms of understanding how to follow the processes and procedures that support IDEA. We've also expanded the EC chair positions at the feedback that we've received from some of our staff and school leaders, so that there's a leadership support much like we have existing in our high schools, for our elementary and middle schools. Those positions are also supported with a monetary stipend. And then we've created access and expanding ECATs where we're able to use this as an online platform to store reports, to store student information for future access. Area three talks about building professional capacity for school leadership and staff. One of the things that I will highlight here is that we have been able to embed in our district principal leadership meetings, ongoing professional learning sessions that help to strengthen their capacity to serve as the local educational agency in terms of facilitating the EC programming in their schools. I've highlighted on this slide some of the information that we've been able to cover in collaboration with our school board attorney in terms of laying out the laws and policies that govern our practices around special education, but also the importance of child find and how that elevates us in being able to get direct resources and interventions to those students who need it. I'd like to pause right here just to have an opportunity for, I think Ms. Reeves has identified a few principles to talk about some of their experiences with our professional learning sessions, as well as overall with the implementation of our restructuring.
Thank you. So we're here to talk tonight, too, just about, we understand that the EC rework has presented some challenges for EC educators as well as our administrators. And so we, the board has recently received a couple of emails that detail some of the accounts of specific growing pains associated with the restructure. So we're talking with that, about that this evening. Our superintendent continues to open herself up of being available to hear the concerns and problems. I was just with her yesterday at a faculty meeting. And we're asking these questions as we're out to hear more about what is going on, how we can help and how we can be of service to get this right. The, our superintendent often challenges us not to just operate, think about how we can be more solutions oriented. That's one thing she says. She also tells us, and she says this when we're out in community, in the community, that we should refuse to allow adult issues to get in the way of what our children need. With that, our leadership team has been committed, and will remain committed, to the decisions yet willing to be flexible. So that's what we want to land on tonight, is that we'll be committed to this decision to doing what's best for kids, but we will be flexible in our approach. We know and acknowledge that change can be hard, and I think that one thing we can all agree on is that changes were needed for the betterment for our EC students. We also know that reflecting on practice is really key for any type of learning organization. So what I know about change and what we teach about change is that it requires us addressing and confronting the brutal reality. And so that is what our school leaders are going to share some of their experiences with EC this year.
Good evening. Dr. Hamlet, board members, leadership colleagues, and community guests.
Excuse me. I am Pam McAllister, proud principal at RD in Uzil Smith Middle School, and I'm here to share with you an EC update for our school. We've all felt the effects of staffing shortages across our district and nation. At Smith, we are grateful to be fully staffed in EC for the very first time in my five years as an administrator in this district, and we can definitely feel the difference of that. As many of you, my colleagues here with us, we are invested in building our master schedule around our EC department and other supports within our building. We all know that this is no easy task with all of the many moving parts involved in that process. EC teachers' classes are scheduled very intentionally to meet students' needs and to provide common planning time with core teachers and with each other. Our lead EC teacher was given a slightly lighter load to allow her more time to shore up compliance processes and attend the necessary, attend to necessary paperwork. This was only possible because we are fully staffed. And for that, I say thank you for the support we've received in that process. Our teachers have shared, having said that, our teachers have shared that there seems to be an uptick in paperwork for staff, EC staff, and we can all acknowledge that their job is not easy. So any additional support for our EC teams across our district is always greatly appreciated. With that, thank you for having me.
Good evening. I'm Amy Rickert. I'm the principal of Morris Grove Elementary. And I do want to share, I'm only speaking for myself and my experience at Morris Grove. Having been in the district many years, I would say my core philosophy is, when I left the classroom, how am I a better, how can I impact student learning? And to me, how you impact student learning is by being a supportive leader and supporting your teachers to be the absolute best teachers that they can be in the classroom. And at Morris Grove, our program facilitator provided an incredible amount of support and leadership to our school. And so while I agree with what Ms. Reeves said, we've, we've been able to make some changes with scheduling. I appreciate as an instructional leader, the focus on instruction and supporting our teachers with specialized instruction. I know you have heard from teachers, though, the concerns of this, of this change and what has happened on some staff teams. And so when we, we learned of the decision to reorganize, our staff and our SIT met to discuss the implications of that change. And we very quickly realized how valuable that role was to our school and our students and our families and our staff. And some of the most vocal supporters came from our classroom teachers because they felt they were concerned about the additional responsibilities that would be placed on our EC teachers and in turn that support for students and learning. So, so we made a difficult decision to waive a teacher assistant position. And as a principal, it's not ever an easy change to take away a teacher assistant. And, and converted that to an MTSS specialist. That, that requires taking someone out of a classroom and taking, finding more support for lunch and recess and those kinds of things. But we felt it was very important to be able to bridge some of these responsibilities that you've heard of to, to support our EC program. And I, and I know there's been some talk about paperwork and things, but, but to give you an example, we have, we had forty, over forty referrals last year from either tier three, five oh we have, we had forty, over forty referrals last year from either tier three, five of four, or parent referrals. And so each of those referrals requires a meeting. And there's probably an hour of prep work for that meeting, a meeting, and then some paperwork to do after that meeting. And that, a lot of that work was done by our EC program facilitator. Yes, there's an EC teacher in that meeting, but that's not built into a caseload number. We say they only have ten kids on their caseload. Well, forty divided by three teachers is a lot. So we were really thinking of some of those expectations and needs when we created this position. So I know this may not have been the best decision for every school, but at the time it felt like what we needed, not that we didn't trust our teachers to do, to learn and grow, but just at the time, it felt that that was the best and the best interest of our staff. And we're still learning from that and looking forward to continuing the conversation. So thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
And so, sorry, yes, it's stories like that that we're still continuing to hear in terms of that qualitative data to make sure that we're using that to inform some of the professional learning and different supports that we have in place.
Thank you. And so as we continue to look at the professional development that is underway for our staff through the upcoming part of the spring, we will be doing some focused professional learning sessions around strategies for supporting our students with autism, as noted on this slide. And then we will also continue our focus around deepening our practices and understanding of utilizing our functional behavior assessment and developing behavior intervention plans to support the improvement of our student behaviors. We're also looking at area four for expanding instructional resources. One of the things that we've also been able to do was to create a process of which we will make requests for instructional materials in alignment with the goals in our strategic plan, but also in alignment with our new curriculum management plan. And we've also began the work of creating a systematic framework of onboarding new staff throughout the year with introducing them to applications of instructional tools and important resources to support our students. So the next part is to talk about our district organizational structure. And I know that Ms. Curtis is going to join me, Ms. Robinson is going to join me at the podium to talk about that. But I do want to pause after kind of rushing through and going through the updates of those deliverables that have happened thus far to acknowledge with gratitude the work that the team from our EC senior leadership has done with moving forward with an intentional focus on prioritizing our student progress and making sure that they have equitable access to the resources and interventions that they need that support fate, but also recognizing that when we do this work for children, sometimes it does not keep us in a place as adults where we're going to be comfortable and complacent. And I wanted to also take this opportunity, again, to acknowledge that there are growing pains with this restructuring, with change is difficult sometimes and processing exactly what's changing and understanding why the change is occurring, but also really understanding what remains the same. And so I know that we've heard from our public comments, we've also heard, you know, from our principals, and we appreciate that feedback. But I think the big message is that we are making the changes to our department to take an opportunity for us to prioritize the needs of our children by amplifying our focus on those core functions that I mentioned, compliance, and most importantly, specially designed instruction. Additionally, with the work that we're doing with our organizational structure, the work is to improve our communication, again, to have effective oversight of our programming. And I can't say it enough, but emphasizing the work that still has to be done with specially designed instruction. And I do want to take a moment to kind of clear up some of the things that may have been shared as misinformation about this restructuring. And so if you'll bear with me, I'm going to talk a little bit about what it is and what it's not. The purpose, the repurposing of those roles for our ECPS position to the classroom teachers was really to provide direct services to our students who at that time had been without teachers for multiple years and to address the learning gaps for our most vulnerable student population in our district. The repurposing of the roles of the ECPS was not to reduce any direct services to our children, nor to reduce the ability of current classroom teachers to provide their services to their students. The redesigning of the roles and responsibilities of the former ECPF positions has now been revised into actually two support roles, their compliance specialists and their EC instructional specialists. And again, this was to leverage school support in the areas of compliance and specially designed instruction and to provide dedicated support, especially in instruction, and to elevate that focus for us to focus in on instruction as opposed to the hyper-focus always on compliance. And I know folks who work in EC understand that. The redesigning of the roles was not to remove support from schools around the core functions of EC, compliance, and specially designed instruction to central office services. In fact, these positions continue to be housed in our schools. The work is to be carried out at the school level with direct support provided to our teachers by our highly qualified coaches that are present in those jobs that provide ongoing professional development and scaffolding as needed. The reorganization elevates the importance of teachers having consistent planning time to develop specially designed instruction, to collaborate on co-teaching strategies, and to create and facilitate co-assessments. It does not negate the statute that says that our teachers must have a duty-free lunch and planning period, which is outlined in their design of their master schedule, which is also created at the school level by their school scheduling team. This reorganization is an opportunity for our teachers to reengage in the IEP development through a shared problem-solving process in an effort to actually improve the communication that happens between the teacher who is directly serving the student and the school with the families around the IEP and their children's process. It is not a way for us to add extra paperwork for teachers or put extra burden on our teachers around paperwork. And when I hear that, it makes me want to say, as a person who, you know, supports the leadership of this department as well as a parent who has a student that has an IEP, that our IEPs are not paperwork. It's much more than that. That is a roadmap to making sure that our students can access academic success and how they're served under the IEP. By maintaining the small caseloads for our EC teachers, the district is recognizing that there should be time where they are able to fully engage in writing IEPs, scheduling and holding IEP meetings as an important aspect, again, for providing free and appropriate public education for our students. And lastly, the reorganization of the district services is driven by the historic performance of large gaps of proficiency for our EC students. And that was indicated and shared, and although I didn't put those slides back up in this presentation, they were accessible in the abstract and that data covered over a period of five years before, during, and after we were experiencing our pandemic. We also used the data that was gathered from, as I mentioned before, the two comprehensive reviews that were done that offered to us indication of a rationale for change. The reorganization of the EC district services that directly impacts specific positions, this is not indicative that these positions were totally responsible for the results that we have for our children that are served under EC services, but that the work of improving the outcomes for our students is actually a shared responsibility across the district. And so I want to take this time to now bring up Fonda. She's our senior executive director for EC services, and she's going to talk about the roles and responsibilities of the structure and follow that up with her assessment during her first fifty-nine days of work on the job.
Good evening again. First of all, I want to acknowledge the tremendous respect and honor that we give to our EC teachers. You know, coming up in the ranks of being an EC teacher, I do know that it is a very difficult job, and it is one that takes tremendous commitment and tremendous heart. All right, our current structure for our leadership team includes three directors, and they are directly aligned with the areas that we've discussed today, this evening, excuse me. Our director of compliance, Erin Watts, who shared with you information regarding compliance and our data. Tanika Day, who supports our psychological services and support services, which are the scaffolding under our specially designed instruction and support. And I want to take this moment to also thank the board for approving Dr. Catherine Pritchard, who will lead us in the area of instructional support. The work of our team is to strengthen clear communication and timeliness of feedback and support, the specificity of the span of control regarding the work and core functions of the department. Span of control can simply be defined as how many direct reports a manager or supervisor has. It is also a management principle used when determining how many direct reports a manager can have and still be able to manage effectively and to support effectively. Our overall goal for our leadership team is to elevate and intensify our focus on providing high-quality instruction for all students, including those who may need specialized instructional support. This current structure clearly allows our division to address some of the longstanding issues that have been lifted up, both in our comprehensive reviews, Dr. Banks mentioned earlier, and our other reporting. And it also highlights both our financial management and being ethically responsible and how we utilize staff and how we utilize staffing for our supports. All right. So let's take Erin Watts' section. She provides oversight to a team of three, a pre-K specialist, an elementary compliance specialist, and a secondary compliance specialist. The work of this group will ensure our district provides procedural safeguards as key essentials to special education, including due process, responsiveness to statement points, supporting parental rights, ensuring students are learning in the least restrictive environment, and ensuring that appropriate evaluations are conducted in a timely fashion and that special education policies are followed. The compliance team also supports CPI, crisis prevention and intervention training. And this team will also lead the work in reducing the over-identification of our students. Dr. Catherine Pritchard's area focuses on the core responsibilities of the district compliance team. I'm sorry, I'm reading a wrong slide. Excuse me. It is very late. Dr. Pritchard's team will focus around specially designed instruction to improve outcomes for our students. You, those of you who were here or have reviewed, may recall that in the June twenty-third report, there was five years of data shared that showed the underperformance of students with disabilities on state assessments. When we isolated per race, we were able to denote that our black students in most common areas were performing at the lowest levels of proficiency. We have a critical need for elevating resources for ECAC, our exceptional children's adapted curriculum, classrooms. Currently, our teachers are using unique learning systems. And so we feel the need that we really need to leverage what we are already using to improve our outcomes for students. So our third area is the director of psychological and support services, Tanika Day. This is our current structure and Ms. Day's area of supervision in providing those support services for students. Sorry, but that was a little bit pregnant. With our current structure, we did some further review as a team of whether things were totally aligned as they should be. And we recognized that those specialists and staff that support curriculum should be with the area of curriculum or instructional support. And those areas that address related services or support services needed to be further aligned. So our recommendation moving forward is to align the adapted PE teachers with teachers because that's what they are, and they provide direct support as well as support services. We felt that the teachers of the deaf and hard of hearing and visually impaired should also be aligned under instructional services because they are teachers. Again, leveraging what we have available to us to support in the areas where we need support. Audiology wasn't represented on our chart, but we do have an audiologist that provides services for assessments of students who are deaf and hard of hearing. And we felt the need to align assistive technology. Our assistive technology providers are actually a team of therapists. There's an occupational therapist, there's a speech and language therapist who also support. And finally, we felt, based on feedback that we received from schools, that the addition of a second compliance specialist to help support in the area of elementary was also warranted. So as I have been listening and learning and talking with teachers, speaking with parents, speaking with administrators, these are some of the things that I've just been... I met with each building principal, and I asked them five questions that cover an array of things in terms of how they felt about their performance data, what they felt would be next steps or areas that they would like to continue improvement, how they felt about serving as a LEA, which is a local education agency representative. And the role of the local education agency representative is to serve as a process leader to oversee what is happening in an IEP team meeting. I took allergy medicine, so I apologize. It is, thank you. All right. So I was able to speak individually in one-on-one conversations with nineteen out of twenty of the principals. It was the intent to speak with all of the principals. However, I was unable to do that due to some scheduling issues, but I will schedule the time to speak with them at a later date. So as a part of the administrative feedback, they gave me honest feedback about challenges and the successes that they're having in their buildings with their students with disabilities. We also talked about inclusiveness of students. And I was happy to hear reports that they feel that the students on the adaptive curriculum are being included. I did receive administrative feedback about how they felt about the EC manual, EC procedure manual. And overwhelmingly, it was very, very positive feedback. But I did receive some feedback that said, this is a great go-to, but maybe we need a step further from that. And so we will take that information under advisement as we continue to revise and to refine our processes to include the things that building administrators and teachers need. need in order to access. And I want to say that a hundred percent of the administrators, though they felt that the manual wasn't effective and a great resource, they also felt that they had confidence in serving as an LEA, but did express some need for additional training in some areas. So we have to take all of the pot, right? So in terms of opportunities that have been identified or that I have identified or we have identified as a team, we do feel that there's a need to promote teacher leadership opportunities within the area of EC. The constant kind of is growing your own, affirming those who are doing the work, and also giving a voice to what is happening at the district level. Nine of the principals that I surveyed expressed timely communication with schools and the EC central offices being important. And so when we discuss next steps, we've talked about ways of refining that as well. And of the administrative survey, identified additional supports for new teachers as are needing their schools, new teachers and developing teachers. And in previous focus group information, has also emphasized the opportunity to strengthen adaptive curriculum and general curriculum supports and resources. So taking that information under advisement, in a later segment, we'll talk about those next steps. But now I'll turn it over to her.
Good evening.
Before you get started, let me just interrupt you. We are running over our typical time tonight. And I only say that to say we're going to allow as much time as we need to complete the EC report and discussion, then we'll make adjustments in the agenda.
I appreciate that. So the EC staff update, as you all are aware, human resources, our division and human resources in regards to the people and the professionals that support our students are the most important resource that we have here. And so we are happy to update our Board and our community that we have, as a district, done an outstanding job with recruiting and retaining our EC staff. And so if you look here at our school-based staff, these are the professionals who most closely work with our students and our families. Our staffing percentages have been extremely high this year as a district. We are currently at ninety-five percent staff. And in EC with our certified staff, we currently have nine vacancies, ten vacancies, excuse me. And in looking at that, it may appear that that is a large number, but that is actually ninety-one percent, we're ninety-one percent filled in EC. And that is not something that a lot of districts are able to share and that we are very proud of. In our classified staff, we are ninety-two percent filled and we're still working on our central office vacancies and we are prioritizing those in our recruitment and our retention efforts. But we wanted to make sure that we shared that we are, this is a priority as a district as a whole. We understand that our EC students are, they have a variety of needs and we are going to share some plans to make sure that we are meeting those needs this evening. So internally, we shared last year that retention is the new recruitment. We in education are not bringing in very many new educators and so we have to be very creative about how we make sure that we have professionals with our students every day. And so some of our challenges we found was in our TA-to-teach program. This has been an amazing program in making sure that we remain fully staffed and that we have professionals every day. However, we're finding that three of the twenty-one current participants, only three have an EC focus. And so these are some of the areas that we need to revisit. Our student teachers and our interns, we currently have seventy-seven between the fall and the spring, and that is a huge number for our school district because that is an easy place to recruit. However, out of that, we have three speech and language pathologists, three occupational therapists, and only one adaptive curriculum teacher. And so as you can see, only one of these positions would actually be in the classroom every day with students on a consistent basis. And then our staff renewal program that we initiated last year has been immensely successful. And so we've had forty-three new hires since May of two thousand and twenty-three as a result of current staff members recommending someone and saying, this is some person, this is a person that I would trust to work in my district that I love and where I spend my time. However, of those, only four were for EC position. And so we want to share that we are aware that there are some challenges and that we are working to make sure that we are consistently growing our own because we definitely have some opportunities here and I think you all will be really, really excited about this part. And so to share some of our opportunities, I'm going to pass it over to Mark Bailey, who is our Director of Employee Recruitment and Engagement, and he is going to share some very exciting, some exciting opportunities.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Good evening. Dr. Harris referenced some of the limitations behind some of our most valuable and effective internal recruitment pipelines, but I do want to highlight a really important opportunity here, and that's specifically lifting up our EC teaching assistants. We did an analysis and twenty-six of our current EC teacher assistants are eligible for a residency license. I'll quickly break that down for you. In order to be eligible for a residency license, an individual has to have a bachelor's degree, a GPA of two-point-seven or higher, they have to be a teacher of record or be offered employment as a teacher of record to be eligible for this license, and also have twenty-four hours of relevant coursework or the equivalent of praxis or teaching licensure exams. If those criteria are met, then someone on an EC residency license can begin teaching immediately. One caveat there, they may have some novice teacher orientation, some pre-service, but the point that I really want to highlight here is someone on a residency license can teach as they complete their program, not complete their program and then teach afterwards. So they can really have an immediate impact. So we have twenty-six individuals who have an opportunity to step into that role if that was something they were interested in. They're eligible for it. Now, that does have a cost to it and that costs a barrier to some folks who are eligible for it. That ranges depending upon the program, anywhere from around four thousand dollars to eight thousand dollars. I do want to highlight, we are going to have a special five-person EC-only TA-to-teach cohort that we're going to bring in in the spring. That's courtesy of a public school foundation grant. And we certainly love the opportunity to expand beyond that because we do think this is an incredible opportunity to bring EC teachers into our district from folks who are already working with our kids and already know sort of how to implement these IEPs effectively. So we think it's really a great opportunity for that, not to discount the impact of four to eight thousand dollars per teacher, but that is a fraction of what we've found and some other things that we've explored in terms of filling those EC staffing gaps. In terms of other external recruitment strategies, a huge thing for all school districts is participating in college and university recruitment fairs. We participated in five in the fall, spring tends to be recruitment season. We're scheduled to attend fifteen recruitment fairs, excited that nine of those are specifically education-focused. In our experience, those are the most effective in actually bringing in folks who are either education majors or interested in education. We're also going to have our Chapel Hill recruitment fair. That's going to be on March twenty-third in Chapel Hill High School. We'll have a significant marketing effort behind that to do everything we can to make sure we have strong participation and bring some great people in. And finally, we're really fortunate, the Council for Exceptional Children is going to have their regional conference this year in Raleigh. We're fortunate that it's so close, not only because it's easy for us to make it, but also because we know a lot of special education teachers will be at that conference who also live locally, and that's a really great way to recruit. We applied to be a vendor at that conference. We were approved, and so we will be present at that conference and use it as an opportunity to recruit great special educators to our district.
I recognize the interest of time and I do see the minutes on the pot moving and I do want to allow time for us to have responsive questions. So these next few slides, I'll be very brief, but I do want to highlight, again, some of the milestones that have been accomplished through the work, specifically just really calling our attention back to the report that was delivered in September about the actual performance of our students with disabilities. We have noticed that there's been a decrease in their chronic absenteeism, as noted on the slide here, as well as there's been an increase in terms of their academic gains as measured by M-class and a reduction in those students who are needing, who are actually, I guess, labeled through Tier Three in terms of being several years behind in their proficiency. And secondly, I'd like to lift up in terms of the compliance work. Since the quarter two, we have found that we've been in ninety-eight percent compliance and based on the indicator two, I'm sorry, twelve, we've seen an increase from ninety-two compliance at the beginning of the year last year to a hundred percent compliance for the beginning of this school year. The next few slides that I will just share briefly in terms of clicking through them, talk about the next steps. One of the things that I will highlight is that there is a plan to go back to visiting the schools to continue to observe the implementation with fidelity around co-teaching practices and use that information to guide our professional learning that will be provided in collaboration with our instructional services division. Another immediate step that as we talk about the creation of structures and systems is to continue to interview and secure available candidates for our existing vacancies that support our schools. I do also want to acknowledge that Ms. Robinson will be continuing her listening and learning opportunities to include teachers and parents. We do have a meeting that has been scheduled for a meeting with our Special Needs Advisory Council. And for those of you all who may not be aware, this is our parent advocacy group that we work in partnership for developing improvements for our EC students. This meeting will be held on February twelfth at one PM at Northside Elementary School. Next week, there will be an email that will go out to all of our staff acknowledging office hours that will be held by the EC senior leadership team, and they will be held bi-weekly, I believe, but that information will come back from Ms. Robinson to create space, again, to continue to hear and communicate about improvements for how we can successfully implement the restructuring. And then lastly, I guess what I will speak to is that we talked about the two comprehensive reports that we use to provide us with guidance in terms of the restructuring. At the direction of our superintendent, we will be engaging with NCDPI to really come back and review and provide us with additional support with our restructuring that we have in place. We did have an opportunity to engage them in conversations about what we have now. They were very excited to hear about the focus around specially-designed instruction in those positions. And so we look forward to bringing them back to provide us with a comprehensive review of what we have in place, how effectively we are now delivering specially-designed instruction, what steps they would recommend that we move ahead. And as we plan to resume our regular cadence of bringing you all an annual review in June, we will be able to provide you with an update at that time. So I close out very quickly to provide opportunities for questions and discussion.
I'm sorry, I was looking the wrong way.
Thank you. Thank you so much for all the detail. I kept writing down questions and you kept answering them, so I appreciate how comprehensive this presentation was. And I think I'm most excited about hearing the opportunity to connect more directly with staff. I think that's what we're hearing a lot of, that I want to better understand through you all what, how staff are perceiving what's happening on the ground. So thank you for making that opportunity for the office hours and the meeting on February twelfth. Super excited about focusing on developing the pipeline. I think that's going to be really important for us to continue to be intentional about that. And then the one question I have is, I think just given the vacancies that we continue to face, is there an interim solution that can address more of the staff? And I do continue to hear about the amount of time we heard someone reference having to give up a TA position to, and that just feels like there's probably some others we can give. So I don't know if you have to answer that. That may be right now, but that may be a combination of listening to the teachers and coming back with them at some point. I love more about that.
Well, I appreciate hearing kind of some of the impacts directly on students. I know for many, many years, you know, pre-COVID, a lot of parents in the community were concerned about EC teachers' direct service to their students. And so with this rework, it focuses on making sure we've got teachers directly serving students. So hopefully, we address that. Obviously, we can't fix the bigger staffing issue just in education in general. And then when you layer on what you shared about EC staffing and the challenges, I was just looking, while people were talking and looking at people's concerns about staffing, the number of EC vacancies are just around us. And then understanding how education has, you know, people going into the education field has plummeted from twenty-one percent down to four percent in terms of college graduates. So it's like, we're fighting a battle and to hear the great work that our HR team is doing with recruitment at ninety-one and ninety-two percent. And I see our Board Attorney, who supports other districts, nodding her head when she sees that number. That lets me know that we are doing quite well compared to our peers in North Carolina and probably nationwide in terms of staffing. I did have a question regarding, I guess, some of the, there were some concerns about with the rework, and there are always concerns whenever there's hiring about district-level staff and where it is. And so I'm just, you know, I want to know a little bit more about that. When the rework happened, did we end up top-heavy in Lincoln Center or?
So the answer is no. If I had the slide that I could pull back from June of two thousand and fifty, um, two thousand and twenty-three, June fifteenth, you can tell it's getting late, June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, you were able to see who was a part of the EC district leadership, which included an executive director, we had two coordinators, we had one director, and we also had an ECAC specialist. At this time, we have a senior executive director, we have three directors that support the core functions of EC, and then we have our actual ECAC specialist position. So that actually brings down the reduction in terms of central office staff from five to four.
Thank you. And then my second question, there was a slide that EC adapted curriculum teacher caseload pretty early on there. I just want clarification on what I saw. So what the state level is six students to one TA? Is that correct? It's not even a teacher, it's a TA?
One teacher, one TA.
A one teacher, one TA. Yeah, so state policy?
Right. So six students, if you have one teacher and one TA, if you have a teacher and two TAs, you can have eight students.
Okay. All right. And so we have, our policy says it's six students, one teacher, and two TAs. Okay, so our number, yet again, just like the previous slide, we have a lower ratio. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that.
Can you talk, thank you very much for the presentation. I was able to see all the slides and hear from all of the staff and congratulations on filling a couple of key roles recently. It was fun to see that. Can you talk a little bit, you know, one thing that I hear just in conversations, I had a couple of conversations when I attended the Equity Symposium last weekend with some EC teachers, and one thing that people have said and that I've heard over and over is that a lot of the instructional practices and kind of modalities of teaching students with disabilities feel very out of date compared to other districts across the country. And so, you know, I hear a lot of talk about co-teaching, but I'm unclear on the exact modality that is utilized in our district. Can you describe a little bit about kind of work that we're doing to achieve best practices in EC? What types of co-teaching is actually occurring in our schools? You know, I know that I see more co-teaching in the upper grades, the middle schools and high schools, but I haven't seen a lot of it in elementary. So just talking about those changes and what we might see going forward in the department.
Yes. I'm going to test my high-level expertise and then I'll get a lifeline up here if I leave out anything. But when we think about the modalities of co-teaching, there are various opportunities to deliver that in the classroom. So for example, you can have one teach, one assist, you can also have parity with both of them teaching and being a part of the lesson in terms of delivering direct instruction. But the most effective, based on the research in terms of the modalities, is stationed teaching. And so what we've done- And so what we've done over the course of, as I mentioned before, uh, starting in two thousand eighteen, we've actually taken opportunities to continue to introduce co-teaching because that had not necessarily been a common practice in terms of the service delivery that was being provided to our students here in Chapel Hill Carroll City Schools. That was also noted in that comprehensive review that was done by DPI. We've introduced just the basic foundational understanding of co-teaching, but it's so much more in terms of just having two teachers in the room and being able to, you know, move in between those different models. There are different best practice and instructional strategies that have to take place. I mentioned the fact that as we did our walkthrough, we looked at the specific evidence-based uh, practices around look-forths and listen-tos around effective co-teaching. And one of the areas that we saw that was an area for improvement for us was differentiated instruction and really being able to design lessons that would address the different and unique learning needs for our students. And so with that, that was the approach and the lead that our instructional services team took this school year in terms of providing professional learning in that area. The other piece that talks about um, providing strategies around co-teaching instruction is the use of technology tools. Uh, one of the things that we utilize in our ECAC classroom is the um, tool of the unique learning system that actually has different types of um, hands-on um, instruction for students, and it's used through the technology as well as the assessments. We recognize too that we implemented that, I believe, a few years ago, and there's a need for more professional learning and development around those practices. So I know we often talk about in, in, in education, innovation, and um, you know, changing practices, but a lot of the foundational practices such as individual instruction, small group, um, being able to provide that for students are the best practices for our students and continue to be that. Um, I don't know how to give you a thirty-second elevator speech around everything with co-teaching, but we're certainly happy to, you know, provide that information in a board update or meet with you individually to just deepen your understanding. And we can certainly share um, the presentations that we've used, um, that were also developed by um, the North Carolina Department of Instruction to teach the modalities around co-teaching. And I don't know if Dr. Hamlet wants to add anything?
Yeah, I'm not necessarily gonna go deeper, I'm probably gonna go a little broader, but one thing that we're really trying to focus on is that our EC students are Gen Ed students first.
Yes.
Um, so you'll see and notice that we've seen a lot of improvement in the collaboration between the EC department and our instructional services department. That's why you'll see that we have um, key strategic actions in our strategic plan that speak to establishing co-teaching teams um, for accountability, for training, scheduling, coaching, and monitoring. That's not, we didn't want to specifically call out EC, because that's for our multi-label learners, that's for all of our learners that need some additional instruction and those instructional strategies um, to support co-teaching. And the last thing I'll say is that um, there are many key strategic actions in our strategic plan that talk about establishing um, professional learning communities. Um, and so one of the things I've been working on with Dr. Banks and her team is that, yes, we, as was mentioned, created this manual, right? And it's a great resource for people to go to. We also want to have ongoing professional learning opportunities beyond the manual. Um, and so there are a number of things that we're um, looking to shore up, and we've got to start somewhere, but I did want to mention that it's not just, when it comes to co-teaching strategies and those best practices, we're not just focusing in on EC because we believe it's a clear partnership between Gen Ed and Fed.
And just to follow up, I mean, I, I guess at some point I'd like to understand a little more deeply, and this could be like through, you know, e- email communication, but I'd just like to get a little more sense of, eh, when you talk about co-teaching, how long the teachers are actually co-teaching, whether it's a full day where you've got two teachers in the classroom, or if there's a special ed teacher who's itinerant, who goes into multiple classrooms. Um, just to get a sense of, because my understanding of co-teaching before I re-entered the Chapel Hill Schools was that it was like a full-day kind of experience, and then I realized that that was a misunderstanding. So I'm just trying to understand a little bit more about the ins and outs of how we do co-teaching in the district, because I just, I have not seen a lot of it in elementary.
The only thing I'll say very briefly, again, I know we're on time, and I like to be, I like to actually fairly answer questions as um, um, they're presented. With the co-teaching and the service delivery and the amount of time that the EC teacher is in that room is based upon the service delivery on the IEPs. So if we have students who have IEPs and they're supposed to receive um, inclusion services for thirty minutes in reading class, then you would have that EC teacher in that room at minimum for um, thirty minutes to provide those services. So those services are based on them being able to deliver um, the IEP needs for the students in that room, if that makes sense. So it would vary um, based on the service delivery plans for the students that they're serving at that time. And they're being served as Dr. Hamlet elevated with their Gen Ed students. So oftentimes, when we see the two teachers in the room, when it's done effectively, you would not be able to identify um, you know, who is the EC teacher and who is the Gen Ed teacher because they're working together to actually provide the instruction for all students in that room. But the EC teacher is also being very cognitive of what are the services and accommodations that need to be provided for those students with IEPs.
Thank you very much, I learned a lot. Um, so one of the letters we got that was signed by eighty-three EC staff, several of whom I know and I know are very hardworking, um, people just asked for something which feels like a pretty modest ask, which is just a comprehensive survey to be sent to EC staff and administrators across the district to get input on the first semester. What, is it fair to say that you're putting in place things that accomplish that same goal with the office hours, et cetera? I mean, do you feel like that's responsive to this request?
I do, as well as with the opportunity for Ms. Robinson to visit with every principal and every um, EC chair that's available or any EC staff that the principal bring into that meeting. Um, you know, we found it to be very effective with the focus groups that we um, held last year. We do want to continue that, um, especially with the new staff that's coming on board to really be able to go through, collect that feedback, and address um, their concerns as we move forward.
So since we started, almost every time we looked at personnel reports, we were focused on EC. We were concerned about EC. We're worried that we're not gonna have enough teachers, what's going on? And then last year in June, I'm hearing from many of my colleagues that they didn't feel like they were represented. And I know that we've acknowledged that there were some communication problems, but now, seven months later, I'm still hearing from ninety of my colleagues, many of whom I highly respect their professionalism, tell, painting a very different picture from what you guys are painting. And that, that has me very concerned. So I, I think there's still a lot of bridge building that needs to happen. I think the more that can happen, the better. I mean, I, I'm, I'm supportive of, of the idea of doing the survey that they were asking for, in addition to doing all the other things that we're talking about doing. And I think there's a whole lot of work here that still needs to get done, because, I mean, you know, Dr. Harris said a little while ago that retention is the biggest part. And, and I thought, oh, great, she's gonna talk about how we're gonna retain our current staff, but that was about retaining other people who could then be moved into the position. We have a lot of work that we need to do to keep this current staff, because we know as much as there are vacancies here, there are vacancies next door. There are vacancies in Durham who have PFs. I mean, they're, you know, we're gonna lose these people if we don't do something about this.
And we, we agree, and that, that is a priority, and Dr. Hamlet, um, we're actually, he's having a start stay interviews with some of our key positions throughout the district. And um, that was already going to be in place for some of our positions for the spring, but EC is quickly, as you can see, bubbling up to the top, where we definitely um, with the letter and with the work that Dr. Banks and her team and the division is doing, um, we will be including EC staff in that to see how we can continue to engage with our EC staff, make them feel included, make them feel appreciated, and then see what else we can do to, so that they do feel heard and they do feel included, in addition to the other suggestions that Dr. Banks and her team will be doing, and some of the ones that you all suggest as well.
So I will just also add, as I closed out, and I know I said this very quickly, Dr. Hamlet has directed us to be in contact with the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, who comes in and does comprehensive interviews with staff, with families, and also they pair that with observations about what's really happening in the classrooms to be able to take all of that data and give us an informed um, uh, review and recommendations about next steps. I think it's one thing to send a survey out to just ask people, how are you feeling about the restructuring? I mean, I think all of us, you know, in this room can speak to the fact that everybody doesn't appreciate change, um, especially us as adults. I do want to also really continue to emphasize that we need to look at what has been the longstanding performance academically, uh, socially, and emotionally for our EC students. And I would love for us to have a lot of focus around improving those outcomes for our students as we continue to also talk about retaining our staff. I think that is the core business of, of what we're here is for being able to address those outcomes. And, you know, I'll take just a kind of a personal and a professional privilege to say that I'm saddened that we have petitions oftentimes that are addressing, um, you know, teachers and the, you know, discomfort around paperwork, but we don't have petitions that want us to do something different for our children. I do want to say that we should go back and look at those slides and see how our students have been performing, and then when we isolate race as we talk about the achievement gaps, how they're performing in terms of our black children.
So maybe then, first of all, thank you for the presentation. I want to just make a few, some of the comments, and I did in a context of, I know my colleagues sometimes get tired of hearing me say it, but I became a special education teacher licensed in nineteen seventy-five. Federal law wasn't even in place yet, you didn't have to write an IEP. That was forty-nine years ago, and I've been in it all my life, so it's my passion. I was a teacher here thirty years ago, Phillips Middle School. My son graduated with an IEP fourteen years ago, and I say that in background, I've been connected to EC here for a long time. And this presentation tonight, I just want to put it in a context, is refreshing to me in a couple ways, and that is that nobody shy away from the situations. The data's out here. People are acknowledging there are issues. People are saying, we are listening now. Everything's not settled. Forty-nine years, I haven't seen it settled. I don't mean just Chapel Hill Carroll. It's hard work, and I think we all recognize that. So I'm gonna leave you with a couple of questions, because I want to see this as we can keep moving forward and look to where we're going rather than where we always are, which is, which is legitimate, the concerns are legitimate. I'm not, I'm not trying to, to figure out anything, but um, I, you know, I do applaud the comprehensive nature of this. As board members, we have now this data in front of us and can reference it. This is the third EC presentation we've had in my two years here. And so we have the information, and my question to you is, uh, and it's not, it's rhetorical tonight, what can we do as board members uh, to learn more about what you're doing? What do we need to do to be seeing what's going on and, and being helpful? Because as you want to get it right, everybody up here does too, regardless of, of background and perceptions. And so I, I want to just say again, real clearly, I'm not minimizing any of the concerns that were raised, they're legitimate. But there's also a lot of kids, and there are, we, we have thirteen-hundred kids in this program with an incredible array of school needs, educational needs, and, and it just, it just, it makes me actually, this is gonna sound weird to some people, optimistic because I think you totally understand what we need to do, and, and, and I was, I saw the H R work as positive, um, even though we have vacancies, because then it's like, we gotta, here's it, and here's what we're doing, and we're trying to get it. So again, I, I wanted to just acknowledge the work people are doing and encourage you to tell the board, here's what, you could come visit, come see a classroom, come learn more about us. We'd love to do it. We just sometimes, I, I, let me say, I love to do it. And, and not speak for anybody else on the board, but uh, you need to direct us to what we can do for warrants. Thank you.
And I'll say, George, within our structures, each of you are school liaisons, not just to a school improvement team, but to schools themselves and have opportunities to walk through schools. So perhaps one of the first classrooms you can ask to visit, take me to a classroom where there's co-teaching going on, or take me to an ECAC classroom. Because oftentimes, not just board members, but perhaps district leaders and others, walk through a school and never step foot in a classroom where EC students are being served. So I think that's a great starting.
Thank you, Dr. Absolutely.
I just, I don't want to lose that third thing that Mike raised, which is, you know, we did talk about a lot of things, I'd love to have some concrete plans where we tend to, I know we're doing this listening to. I'd love for the board to hear back, you know, what the results of that are, and to George, it's like how we can help support. I do think, um, obviously, teaching is really, really hard, and these people are really invested. So if there are some simple things we can do to support the board, it would be, I would be okay.
Thank you, Dr. Banks.
Thank you.
Okay, that's gonna conclude the report for EC tonight. It is ten forty-five P M., and so we're gonna make some adjustments in the uh, agenda here. Uh, Dr. Hamlet, I'm gonna need your assistance here. I, I think what we can do is postpone the discussion on the Virtual Learning Academy update till the next board meeting, and I hate to do that, but it's late and we, we need to give it ample time. But we do need to get two other items done tonight. One is the school improvement plans, this is time-sensitive, and the other one is the iPads question for purchase.
Correct. And so I just want to say, so that it can be uh, on the record, the future of the Virtual Learning Academy update was just an update, it did not require board action. What it means, though, is that it will push back our timeline by two weeks um, to include the public hearing. So I just want to be clear with the public and um, with the board that it's fine to push that item back, which means everything else will be pushed back two weeks, and that's okay.
Okay, thank you. And so with that said, we're, we are gonna push that to the next meeting, and we're gonna do the next discussion and action items, A P and I C, starting with school improvement plans.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So the North Carolina General Assembly has established a school-based management plan, it's a more of an accountability model. So the law requires that each school develop a school improvement plan that is aligned in Policy Thirty-four Thirty. Um, our school improvement plans really serve as a roadmap for us, and that's a strategic plan. Um, our school leaders um, were here with us. There's a lot of them, I promise you, every one of them were here. But anyway, there are several schools that have led this work, and so we did um, bring a couple of schools to talk about this tonight. Um, so I want to thank those that showed up tonight, and even school improvement team members that are here. Look in here. We appreciate you all. Uh, so this night, uh, at this time, we're gonna speak with you, Ayesha Howard is gonna speak with you about our elementary school team and some of their plans, just to give a general overview, and then share some of the highlights of our um, school improvement plans.
Good evening, Dr. Hamlet, C C C S School Board and Cabinet Members. My name is Ayesha Howard, and I serve as the Executive Director of Elementary Schools for the School Leadership Division here at Chapel Hill Carroll City Schools. I first will share with you more about our internal processes that got us here tonight, coupled with the support that we provide our schools as they engage in the school improvement planning process. The process, our department guides the school improvement process by providing ongoing support and training for school, school improvement teams' co-chairs. Our initial work began last spring when the School Leadership Division and the Instructional Services Division trained, we, we were trained by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction on how to lead the school teams through a facilitated assessment for multi-tiered system of support. system of support, or what I refer to as FAMS. We learned how to train teams on how to go through this process as a group. The process is used for schools to assess where they are in six areas of school improvement. Those areas are leadership, building capacity, communication and collaboration, database problem solving, and data evaluation as it relates to the multi-tiered systems of support or NTSS. A descriptive rubric is used to rate where schools are in subcategories in each of these six areas. Beginning at our Teaching and Learning Institute in August, we provided a school improvement professional learning session for principals, APs, school improvement chairs, and co-chairs. This session was led by one of DPI's school improvement specialists, Michael Toronto. This session was instrumental in kicking off our school improvement work for this year. We use this information to provide monthly sit co-chair sessions in the fall to support schools in updating their school improvement plans for this cycle. We utilize feedback from the co-chairs meeting to support schools with specific needs, offering one-on-one guidance and resources to school teams so they will have clarity and specifics around requirements, deadlines, and general expectations. We hosted principal, co-chair, and sit member-led school improvement plan presentations and invited district leaders from every department and school board members to attend to offer feedback. Our team then provided individual feedback to each school using a rubric so that teams could update their indicators in Endastar, which is the platform that we use to capture data for the school improvement plans, and to finalize their presentations before final submission. This evening, I want to take a few moments to share with our school improvement, our school improvement planning process and how principals are placing intentional focus on the NTSS framework within their schools. This work was a common theme through our elementary schools' school improvement plans, and we believe that a strong NTSS plan at elementary schools exists. Schools are all focused on improving the NTSS framework structures based on the FAMS, school level from the spring assessment. Observations this year so far include an intentional focus on data-driven professional learning teams and professional learning communities. Principals are spending a lot of time with their teams reviewing data and making collaborative decisions for students using ongoing data sources. Regular NTSS meetings are being conducted, and these are also including parents. That was a focus that we wanted to make sure that as we were having students go through our NTSS process, that parents were included and actually participating in what was happening for their children. There has been a more intentional focus on collaborative meetings that utilize data to make decisions for students, and principals are being intentional about using the report in STAR and M-CLASS to provide laser focus on areas that students need continued support with. All schools have intervention blocks where data is being discussed in NTSS meetings and in other collaborative meetings, and it, and other collaborative data meetings are being addressed with students in need of supplemental and intensive support, getting additional small group access to teachers. Our Title I elementary schools began literacy tutoring this past Tuesday, and many elementary schools have plans for after-school tutoring, and some have already started for a broader range of students. At this time, I'd like to ask one of our elementary principals, Amy Ricker, to share how the NTSS framework is driving instruction in her school and how her school's intentional efforts are supporting students' growth in the classroom. I have visited Amy's school several times during her intervention block and have attended data meetings at her school, and have not only been impressed by the structures that are in place for, to support all students, but by Ms. Ricker's deep knowledge and understanding of all her students, their needs, and where they are in the NTSS process.
I'm back. Thank you for allowing me to speak. When we first started implementing Endastar, I wasn't sure if I would like it, but I'm a fan now because I appreciate that Endastar allows school leaders and SITs to assess the various indicators and decide where we need to grow as an individual school in relation to our data and district goals. So as Ms. Howard said, this year, we have continued to dig deeply into A4.01, which is the indicator that really focuses on a school developing a tiered instructional system that, with evidence-based instruction and addressing the needs of all children. And, and that has been a long-term goal at Morris Grove, but it's just gotten a little more streamlined and tighter as we have, have worked on this through our, our school improvement plan. And as Ms. Howard said, it really does align with our district strategic plan and our instructional plan and the FAMS, the overall assessment. So it, it is nice when educators can see it all tie together and make sense. So during the last couple of years, we have worked specifically to create and improve our structures for tiered support. So what are we doing beyond the core instructional program? We've established data-driven criteria for how we identify students who need tier support in tier two or tier three. And, and that work has really allowed us to create systems for working together to decide which students need interventions, what interventions we will use, who will provide the interventions, and how student progress will be monitored, and how, she mentioned, how we will share with, with parents. And, and that has really, that's when, that's not just an interventionist, that's the first grade team, the fifth grade team, working together to, to support the needs of the students. Specifically this year, we're really getting, hopefully we'll be able to, we've met this goal this year, but really developing what we call data-driven entrance and exit criteria to just determine also, when should you receive an intervention, and when do we know that you should, you are ready to go back to core, or you're ready to, for a higher level. And the other new thing we've done this year is expanding the process to social-emotional learning. We tend to think of interventions in academics, you know, supporting reading, writing, and math, but our student, student services team and administration have, we've been creating a process for collecting better data on SEL needs and helping figure out which students in the school need tier-two SEL support, and those specific social-emotional skills we need to teach, and, and how we will monitor those and assess the progress. So it is exciting work, something I'm passionate about. And as someone mentioned, your, Dr. Hamlet mentioned, you're welcome to come visit. We'd love to, to have you see the, the work we're doing. So thank you for allowing me to share.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Hamlet and Cabinet Members. My name is Dr. Robin Buckram, and I serve as the Executive Director for Secondary Schools, where I supervise and support our school administration at the middle and high school level. Now that the schools have completed the updates in their plans, our job now is to help them with implementation and monitoring. One of the main ways we do this is by supporting the school improvement team co-chairs. And so we have monthly meetings with them, we share DPI resources with them, and we basically have this meeting every month to serve as sort of a, a connection and a problem-solving group that they have. And it's not uncommon for them to get together outside of us because sometimes they want to share information with each other, or they want to get ideas from other schools. And so it has been a wonderful place for them to connect across all grade levels because sometimes it doesn't matter what the grade level is, if they're doing something in their school improvement plan that's working for students, then that's something that somebody else can use as well. Another function of the meetings for the sit co-chairs is to also help them with recruiting when it's time for our sit elections. And so those will be coming up in the spring, and we also connect them with the PTA Council President, as well as work with our family engagement group to help them not just recruit parents, but also try to recruit diverse parents, those parents who are often not involved sometimes, or don't know what it looks like to be involved and to be a parent rep. And so part of our function, too, is to help them bridge that gap between home and school. And one of those ways is to make sure they have a, a parent rep on their teams. And so this year, we have a new PTA Council, I think Ms. Andrea Tanner, and we'll be working closely with her to make sure that all sit election processes are fair and that they recruit a diverse group of, of parents. As a division, we're holding all our school leaders accountable for progress and growth in the areas of instructional excellence and creating a culture of safety and wellness. And you'll be able to find those, those strategic goals also in all of our sit plans, school improvement plans. You'll also find some trends at the secondary level, which include an intentional focus on students who need additional support, whether it's academic or social and emotional. This year, all of our secondary schools have implemented an intervention block, and it is actually a part of their schedules this year. So they were very, very intentional about doing some of that. Along with that intervention, they're also, we are also working with university instructors again to provide high dosage tutoring for targeted students. Another area that we are really focusing on that you'll find in the secondary plans is our family and community engagement. And all of our schools have to have four family engagement events, a minimum of four family engagement events a year. And so that's also another place where we are trying to connect them with our family and engagement department here in the district. So whether it's been launching family resource centers like at Smith, or whether it's been going out into the community, the secondary schools have really embraced this, and it, they are seeing gains in that in their buildings because they've done some of that work. So I want you to know that this school improvement work is not just happening when it's time for our plans to be approved. Our schools started working at the end of last year, over into the summer, on what they wanted to do strategically for this school year. So at this time, I'll have Ms. Cheshire, who's our principal of Phillips Middle School, to share a little bit about her programming that her team has done in the area of family engagement to address their student needs.
Good evening. I should say good night. I will keep it brief. I will say I'm really excited about the community events that we did last summer. One of the things that I always say at new student orientation, whenever we're in front of parents, is that middle school always feels like that's the time when you should give kids autonomy and freedom and kind of let them go. And it's actually the opposite. It's really a time that you need to hold their hands a little bit tighter. And so we realized that, I think also at middle school, it is harder to get families and parents into the building in evenings. I mean, between schedule, sports, you know, the extracurriculars, plus just having, you know, a busy life, it is hard to sometimes do that. So we decided to flip it, and instead of, we do still invite parents into the building to do things, but we also figured that over the summer was a really good time for us to connect with some of our families that we don't get a chance to see. And so we planned five community events last summer between June and July. Jackie Levin, her department, supported us in terms of being able to buy food. We invited all of our feeder schools at the elementary level to join us, and we invited East to join us since about 98% of our kids go to East. Principal Casey and his APs joined us, I think, at four of the five events that we did. And so we went to, although we were specific in what communities or apartment buildings we were going to, we did invite our entire student body and families to join at any apartment building or, or event, whether they live there or not, so that we wanted to connect with them. So we brought, Jersey Mike's partnered with us to do box lunches, and so we brought probably 40 or 50 meals to every single spot. We brought books, Book Harvest donated books for us. We also brought journals and things for kids, like mindfulness things, coloring that they could do, deck of cards and games and things that they could take home with them. And then one of the things is, we, we did learn from that, we scheduled things for around 11 o'clock, realizing that middle schoolers and high schoolers do not like to get up by 11 o'clock. So we will be adjusting that for the summer, but we were, we were able to, it was really, one of the really cool things I thought is that, you know, we had eighth graders who were going into high school, but they, they were still ours for a little bit longer, right? Although we knew we, we wouldn't have seen them had we not done this event. And so it was really cool to be able to say, hey, student X, I want you to meet Principal Casey. He's going to be your new principal. This is your ninth grade administrator. And one thing that I love about student X is that he is very talented when it comes to playing the trumpet. You know, and so we were able to, like, it felt like we were physically handing over our students to the high school. The couple of things that we've learned since then is that it really, it sounds cheesy just to say it's strengthened relationships, but truly what happened is I've had several phone calls from parents since that would say, were you the blonde one that was at the community event that we did? You know, or did you tell me about, you have two kids? Like, they connected, we were able to connect in person. So then they weren't as, as, I mean, I say worried about having to call the school about the issue that they had. They had already met us in person. And so that was really cool. It was also really cool just to get to see the kids. You know, you go from June to August, and for some of them, we wouldn't see them anymore as they were going to the high school. The other thing that we learned from those is that we had multiple kids who had just moved into a neighborhood who were going to be coming to our school. And so we were able to connect very quickly with their families, and a couple of them said like, hey, my student has this need, could we talk about it? And we were like, we've got time right now, like, tell us more about it. And then we would go back and email ourselves notes from it, like, we met such-and-such, and, you know, or we also had at one point, someone said there was an issue in the neighborhood in the last few weeks, and they were worried about what would happen when they go back to school. So we made a note of that and made sure they didn't have elective classes together. So we were able to make better choices for our kids based on getting to meet people in the community. We are planning to do the same thing this summer, and so if any of you want to come in the spirit of continuing to invite, you're welcome to come to any of us, we'd love that. And then also just wanted to say that it also went back to the district strategic plan around joy. And so just getting to see them, you should see our pictures, other than the fact that we're all sweating. You know, we would have music playing, and then we ended up going to every, every building and where we're trying to give people food and supplies and things, and it was just really nice. It was nice to get to see our kids, old kids, upcoming kids. So it's something that we would like to continue doing after this year, too.
So I'll end by saying first, thank you, Ms. Ricker. Thank you, Ms. Cheshire. And so that really concludes our work with the school improvement plan. And so really, this work is really representative of the work that you'll see across all of our schools. It was really interesting tonight, not necessarily interesting, it's exciting to still here at 11 o'clock at night, our school leaders are excited about the work that they're doing and can talk about it, because it's, it's not a plan that they put on the shelf, it's something that they're actually doing each and every day. And so with that, we have 20 plans before you that I think are much the same way, but just elected two leaders to really talk about the work that they're doing. Any questions for us?
I think this is for you, Dr. Buckram. First of all, thank you, I, I learned a lot. So I, I was just, I looked at the Phoenix Academy plan, and I think, I think it's, like, it's compliant with the law, but I know it just seemed different from the other ones, and then it didn't have proficiency goals, it just had course goals, and I didn't know if there was a reason for that. And I guess relatedly, I don't know if the test, if Phoenix students are exempt from some of the things that you would otherwise have metrics for, if, anyway, just whatever you can say about that would be helpful.
So yes, you're, you're exactly right. The baseline data is going to look very different for, for Phoenix because they are an alternative school, and so they actually have a whole different set of metrics that they're measured by from the state. And because of the nature of the school, the kids may or may not be there, they may go for a while, they may come, they may leave, they may come mid-year. There are a lot of different ways, it's sort of a, I don't want to say revolving door, but the students kind of move in and out. And so we don't have that baseline data for them like you see for other schools. However, what we are going to start to move towards is using our STAR data to test all of the students in Phoenix, because right now, at the high school level, only the ninth and 10th graders are tested with, with the STAR assessment. And so to get at what you're talking about, we are looking towards finding another way for the, all of the kids to be assessed, so that we do have some comparison data from year to year. And what it'll ultimately look at is more year-to-year growth, because students should be making growth throughout the year, and there's typically a number for that. So, thank you. Good evening.
Yes. Yeah, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate the process. I think this is the second year that I've done where I sit in on the, the presentations and give feedback. So I just want to say, I really do enjoy it because it does give me, you know, as a board member, an opportunity to actually listen to plans, you know, when I'm hearing a presentation. I do try to sit in on all the schools where I'm the liaison, so I look forward to sitting on three new schools this year and hear their plans. But it's really great to hear, ask questions, and obviously get responses from the staff. So I really appreciate that there's engagement for us as a board member even before, they come before us for full approval of all the, all the plans.
And thank you for coming.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Also, I love hearing that this school improvement has alignment plans to truly connect community into schools and build better outcomes. I also love that our principals are here at 11 o'clock. They still home, they're going to have to go back to school, be there at 7 o'clock. They go home now. I would like to consider a better way for the board to review this information, though. It's really heavy to read through 19 in a really short time. And so one of the things we've done in the past is like, do levels at a time, so high school comes one time, and then middle school and elementary. And so I just would encourage you all to think about a different presentation format, and it also gives us a little more time to go deeper into some of the conversations. So I just want to put that out there. And then I've also, I've... And then, I've also advocated in the past for more of a common format across. I love, I think it was Carbo High School's, they've got a table up front that has, "Here's our goal, here's where we are." And so, that just like repeating that in each one will help me process and I think, I don't want to speak for everybody, but like that feels like help and might avoid schools having to recreate their own template at that time. So, I'm supportive of what we have in front of us today, but again, definitely want to think about it differently.
Absolutely. Thank you for the feedback.
Yeah, and we can talk some... we've been reflective about our work as well and have heard feedback from principals that it might not be helpful for them to do it every year, but maybe every other year. So, maybe that'll give us maybe 10 to review one year and 10 so it's always on a cycle and that could get it better and make the load a little bit easier for the principals to do for schools. So, maybe we can think about that.
Which is permissible for two years.
One more thing. And now, I do appreciate, I don't know if it was last year, but definitely this year, I appreciate that the addition of the strategic plan and alignment with the strategic plan was part of the SIT plans now. So, that's something that I like because it's keeping the schools aligned with the bigger plan for the district. So, I just want to say thank you for making sure that was part of the process.
And some of that is just we've had a longer runway. So, last year, we were just implementing the plan. So, last... this year's PD and all that was much more aligned. So, yeah, absolutely.
And then, for newer board members, we try to do this end of November, at latest, by early December. We're trying to keep your agenda light the day that you were sworn into the board. So, that's why we're doing it now in January, but that's not the typical timeline.
Anybody else? Board members working on the agenda isn't doing a very good job.
Thank you all for being here. I would second what Ronnie said about the principals and acknowledge the school improvement team, teachers and staff members because they got to be in class too. We appreciate it.
Thank you. And there's one more question.
Oh, wait, we need... we need a resolution here.
Second. Thank you.
There's been a motion to approve the 20 school improvement plans.
Motion by Ronnie. Second by Reese.
Seconded. Need discussion further discussion? If you're none, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Nothing is unanimous. Thank you. That brings us to the K-1 iPads replacement purchase.
Yes. This was an item that was originally on the consent agenda and due to a board member's request, we moved it to discussion and action. So, I will go to Debbie and ask.
Well, good evening, or good night, as Tiffany said. I'm Debbie Outwater, the Executive Director of Technology.
Can we just ask questions? I'm sorry, Debbie, but it's 11 o'clock.
Sure. Do you just want to ask questions? Sure. Because we can start there.
We can sure give it a try.
How about answer any questions you may have?
Did you want to... did you have a question? Barb, you had a question?
Well, okay. So, I looked at the audit, the curriculum audit, and there's several references in the audit to seeing technology in the classroom being used passively. And when it's being used, being used as a practice workbook or worksheet on a screen, that's, I'm just quoting from page 117 to 118. And it concludes that passive use of technology, et cetera, is not expected to deepen the learning experience, to increase academic achievement outcomes. And so, I think that's what... that's where I'm coming from with my concerns about this. I mean, I understand that your iPads are old and they're going to stop working, but I guess I just... I appreciate the response, the very thorough answer to the questions that I raised, but I guess I just, I'm still not persuaded that every kindergarten and first grader needs their own iPad. Like, I just, I don't see it. I don't... it's a half a million dollars, like a lot of money we could pay for the teaching assistants to become teachers. I just, you know, and we just spent $300,000 just a couple of years ago to give stipends to teachers to be trained in letters and I just, again, I'm not totally seeing how the iPads are integral to the new way we're teaching literacy. So, I just, it feels prudent to at least ask, you know, do we really have to give every kid an iPad? So, I guess I, with understanding that I might lose this, I guess in the interest of time, what I'd like to do is see if there's a friendly amendment that's possible to make to basically cut this number in half.
Are there other board questions or comments?
I'll make a comment to that. When we were moving to the one-to-one devices here in the district, we were pretty excited about it. And I'll go so far as to say, in terms of the lower grades, I think one-to-one is pertinent simply because, well, I won't say simply, for a number of reasons, actually. If you cut it and you have... I can remember when they had the cow where they moved the iPads from different classrooms in the elementary school and you shared them and you charged them. I remember that volunteering in the classes and how that had to work. And sometimes it was difficult making sure you got an iPad in the student's hand that you needed at that time so that when you were in the space... So, when they all don't have one that's assigned to them, then you have the problem of, does the student who needs it at the time that is needed get what they need? So, if you have the one-to-one and you have the ability to do it, yes, I understand that that costs some other places, but that does put you in a much better situation for the student at hand. And then, of course, if something happens and they need to be at home, they have a device that they've learned how to use in the classroom by our teachers and I think that's pertinent too.
Thank you. Reese, you want to breathe?
Well, just in terms of... I see Al standing up here. I'm going to help him out. The iPad money can't be used for TAs, correct, in salaries because it's Article 46 money, correct? And so, I appreciate that. You know, I'm always wanting to figure out ways for us to pay our teachers more, but...
Just for clarity, it's a combination depending upon the year, but it could be recurring capital.
Yep.
Or it could be the Article 46, that are dedicated funds that county commissioners approve on an annual basis for use with technology.
And that's on the... that's not on the operational side of funding, that's on the capital side of funding.
It is on the capital. So, the money does... we do need to use it, but it is money that carries over versus being at the end of the year.
And personnel is on the operational side, not the capital.
That is correct.
Just so we're clear, so professional about, so just keep in mind, it's not like we can say, "Let's not spend this money and then we're going to go pay teachers and TAs more." It's not... you can't do that.
So, I asked Tammy to come up and share because from, as much as we talk about third grade reading and our gaps and the importance of early literacy and our focus on that, I would like for Tammy to share, who's our Director of Elementary Humanities, to share more specifically from a literacy standpoint and the use of iPads and the one-to-one and the logistics that are behind that.
Yeah. I'll start, I think, with the logistics first. And I think when, as an instructional coach, I was previously an instructional coach in a building, when you have that one-to-one first day with your five and your six-year-olds, it is, thank you for volunteering, all hands on deck. Five and six adults are not even enough to help us get our single sign-on completed. So, if we didn't do that, if we were to go to a smaller number, say even half the class, we would be compromising instructional minutes. So, the teacher and/or the teacher assistant might have small groups, but you've got kids using the same iPad, so they're signing in and out. These are five and six-year-olds that we need to remember numbers and that kind of thing. And so, the instructional time is going to be lost there. And I'm really concerned about that, that the teacher would have to leave their group and then, you know, help students log in. I think one of the things it really does for us is it provides the teacher some of that time and we use several tools to do that. One of them is Lovely Lo. And right now, it is totally based on the science of reading. It teaches phonics awareness, it teaches phonics, vocabulary, reading fluency, and it's designed specifically for K-1 students. It is so effective that our 3-5 teachers, our EC teachers, are clamoring for it. In fact, there was an email yesterday and I have access to Lovely Lo. It's not really designed for 3-5 students. In addition, Arc Adventures. It practices those irregular phonics words and again, designed for K-1 students. And then, I think, you know, finally, Arc Bookshelf. Many decodable text in reading A-Z and on Arc Bookshelf that our students can manipulate themselves very easily on an iPad because those devices mirror the cell phones that many families have at home and/or devices that they have at home. So, just wanted to share.
Board members, other questions or comments? There's a motion on the floor to approve. And a second. Any further discussion? If you're not all in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Aye. I'm opposed.
If that passes six to one. Thank you. That brings us, I know it's very late. Is there more members then sharing that you care to make sure we did tonight? I was just sharing, we need to adjourn. This meeting is adjourned.